Strong interest to many of you. I do have to give you some news at this point, however, though. We have two of the four people that are, two of the four board members are recused on all cell tower applications. So, at the moment, we only have two members here. There is a third member expected this evening. We have been trying to reach her. Her cellphone's not working, so we don't know why she's not here just yet. So, if we don't have a third member who can participate in this application, we're not going to be able to open a public hearing. What we will do is we will get to that, let's, we'll go through our application, we will get to that point. If they're not here, we'll go to the next public hearing. We have a number of other public hearings. I hate to say it, it means some of you folks are going to just end up hanging out here and watching us, you know, for a little bit longer and look, watching some of the other public hearings, which of course, you're absolutely welcome to participate in as well. So, we will, you know, we'll just keep doing that until, you know, if, but if at one point we're out of public hearings, we may ju, and she, this other member still is not here, I'm just not sure we're going to be able to open the, we, I know we cannot open the public hearing without a quorum. I won't have enough members to take action. So, I just want to give you the head up, heads up at the start, as we started the meeting at this point. Um, let me just, for the, for the record, I always generally start out our meetings in this manner. There are a number of applications before the board at this point. Some of the applications, those that are on for public hearings or adjourned public hearings are applications that this board has seen before. We've already done a review on them. Some of them, especially in the case of Homeland Towers, have had extensive review, where we've asked for a number of reports, we've asked for alternates, we've asked for all sorts of other information, before we felt it was appropriate to open the, this up for public comment. Many of the other appeals, generally, we just see them one or two times before we open them up for public comment, or for, you know, for the public hearing. So, we are, um, we do, we will go through the public hearings first. After the public hearings, there are still other applications that are brand-new to this board, or ones that we might have seen last month that needed additional work on them. So, the reviews are what we'll do afterwards. The reviews are not open to public comment at this point, because again, the board is still working through what some of the issues and understanding and understand, you know, trying to see what alternatives exist, that sort of thing. So, I do appreciate your patience as we work through this. Hopefully, our other member will be able to join us this evening, but, you know, I, in my, my personally, I just hope she's safe. That's the, that's the biggest issue, because just, it's surprising we haven't heard from her. All right. That being said, um, I do also want to rea, reiterate at this point, because it is November, and we've already had an incidence of snow. Just a reminder for all board members and for members of the public, that in the event the town hall is closed, our put, snow policy is that our meeting is canceled, and any public hearings, any action, anything that would have been before, the board gets pushed off until the next month. Um, we don't call, there's not a revised date of a meeting or anything like that. We just push everything off to the following month. We do need to adopt a calendar for next year, um, so that at our next meeting, we can make sure it's posted and it, and it's appropriate for everybody. So, I do ask the board members to take a look at this proposed schedule that we have before us, noting that all of these days are Tuesday with the exception of September, because, um, the September 10th would be primary day. Moving it to the Wednesday makes it September 11th, which there's a memorial event here usually held at town hall that evening. So, we've actually proposed to move it to Monday. That's not a regular night for our board, so I, you know, I need to be sure that it's a date that could work for board members, so we don't run into a quorum issue. So, that being said, do I have a motion to approve the calendar for 2013?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, great, thank you. Um, so, our next meeting date will be Tuesday, December 11th. All right. Um, now, just again, for the purpose of information, um, we, the town has hired a radio frequency expert related to work, help us work through some of the issues on the Homeland Towers application. He is not able to be here tonight, so our plan was originally, we had already told the applicant, our plan was to adjourn the public hearing tonight anyway to the December meeting, so that you all have the opportunity to hear from this radio frequency expert. Again, he's the one who looks at all the models and says, yes, this is, you know, this is the height that they need, because it works X, Y, Z, whatever, you know, all that information, any health issues, any, um, you know, sound issues, things of that nature. So, he was not able to be here. We, he is expected to be here in December. So, um, again, we were going to be adjourning the public hearing anyway, to give him an opportunity to be here, to be able to address any comments that you might raise.
It would have been nice if we would have known that, because we have our own consultants here that came up from the city, and...
We didn't know that. At the last meeting, we couldn't set the public he, we didn't know if we were going to set the public hearing before the meeting. So, when we did set the public hearing, because the applicant was still giving us information. So, when we did ultimately set the public hearing and we called the expert, he told us back in November, he was, in October, he was not going to be available in, in November. He, he, you know, he doesn't work full-time for us, so we couldn't, you know, we're doing, doing the best that we can. I'm sorry, excuse me?
Public hearing canceled?
No, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna work on our agenda. Again, in the instance that we don't have a third member at that time, we'll move on to the next public hearing. If she comes in, in the meantime, we'll go to that public hearing as soon as we're done with whatever item we're working on. All right? So, with that being said, let's go to item number one.
What is my question?
Appeal 3489, sorry, 3469 Brodessen, Gary Brodessen, 65 Ritter Road, was granted a special permit for an accessory professional use music studio to be located in his home, in his house on October 12th, 2010, is before the board for required two-year renewal of said permit pursuant to section 194-90 of the zoning ordinance. Now, at the la, do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, the public hearing is reopened. At our last meeting, we did grant Mr. Brodessen an extra 30 days, so that we could have an ish, an opportunity to go out. I did actually have an opportunity to go out, I met Mr. Brodessen at his house, to go see the issues that we were talking about and that were raised by some of the neighbors. For the board's information, we took some pictures, you know, my daughter and I took some pictures, so you could all see. This is Mr. Brodessen's driveway. All right? His house is actually up here. Here's the fence that they were talking about, the, the little bit of a stretch of a fence. This is the one neighbor's house, all the way down there, down the hill. All right? There, we're on the street. So, as we're on the street, which apparently is where many of the neigh, where many of the students' parents park, music students, for the couple of days a week that he operates, her, the headlights are not going anywhere near this residence. And then also, the other residence is in the back here, um, for the two neighbors. Their, their, the headlights are staying in the street. When you actually go into the driveway, if you were dropping, if a parent was dropping off their student in the driveway, you're actually going to go climbing the hill, climbing his driveway, which is on a hill. So, the headlights are not shining in this neighbor's house. She, I don't doubt that if she's looking out her window at the time that a car is pulling into the driveway, that she will see headlights, but that they're not, definitely not shining into that house. They are shining, they're up, and then they'll level out as you go up to the top of the hill. So, I'm not sure that adding any additional fence is going to change that. This is where, again, this is the, actually, if you go into the driveway, you probably impact her more, but again, you're, you're going to be facing this way. But this is the fence that was in place. We had pictures last time around that showed an entirely different fence. Um, so, she did specifically ask us, the neighbor did ask us, to wait for the trees to come down, so I did. You can see the trees are down, there's, um, now, this is the neighbor in the back, all the way back there. We are standing in the rear of his house. Okay? The top of his driveway, in the rear of his house. So, there is a significant distance from there. Um, that's not as clear, we tried zooming in on that. And the other issue that came, was brought to our attention, was the fact that the windows are kept open, um, or are opened at occasion. What we did, you know, looking at the windows, you kind of look at them and say, well, they kind of look like they're open, but then you realize that those are the storm windows. And so, that's what the window looks like. It's actually not half-open, it's, that's what the storm window is. So, I think, you know, um, and this is the neighbor's house, the one neighbor that spoke to us about the headlights shining in. So, again, this is his house up here, you can see the fence, oops, sorry, you can see the fence that's in play there. So, um, you know, so I was comfortable with the, with the information that Mr. Brodessen has presented, with his revised schedule, that shows he's actually reduced the, the schedule of, of classes at this point. But, you know, again, that's just for the board's information, um, for us to consider. We, the public hearing is open, then, is there, are there any comments or questions from board members before I invite anybody from the public?
For the record, um, I did visit, uh, Mr. Brodessen's, um, property, but I did it from the outside, so I am aware of the neighborhood, but not to the extent that was presented in the photographs by the, by the person, so, just for the record. Uh, one of the thing, concerns that I had, uh, was the noise level, which a couple of neighbors had mentioned, and then people, and I think if you look at the topography and also the, the, the material that this, that's in that, in that, in that neighborhood, it's a lot of shale and rock. And I think, um, when music is being played, it migrates, it gets transmitted along the, on the surface, and I think it just, you know, it gets, uh, it, it creates a noise level that gets increased when it goes to the neighborhood. So, that's what we had talked about in the, a few years ago, when this, uh, request had come for this particular board, to have it in a soundproof, uh, room. And I believe that has alleviated some of the problems, uh, the neighbors had cons, had concerns in the previous hearing that we had a couple of years ago. So, um, um, that's what I'd like to add to the discussion at this point.
Any else? If not, is there anyone here to speak for or against the application, appeal for Gary Brodessen, 65 Ritter Road, for his, to renew his special permit for an accessory professional use, the music studio?
I have, in this opinion.
You have additional information for us? Sure.
So.
Okay, great.
Pictures, uh, my friends.
Okay, good.
Is it making part of the record?
And debris. Okay. Yep.
Are they part of the record, or you just want us to locate it?
Are they, you're going to leave them with us?
No, I can leave them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, just make it part of the record then.
Okay, no problem. Just for the record, let me read the letters that you've given me. Um, one dated today, November 13th, from Dean Ryder, to whom it may concern, I write on behalf of Gary Brodessen. I am a neighbor of Mr. Brodessen and have been since he moved in many years ago. Although my house is not close to his, I frequently ride my bicycle or walk by his music studio. In the years that I have been doing so, I have never so much as heard a note emanating from his facility. In fact, if anything, Mr. Brodessen is totally innocuous. My family and I value the presence of Gary Brodessen in our neighborhood and our community. Please pass that to Pam. And then there's an additional letter from Joseph Bentero, Bentero, again, dated today, to the Town of East Fishkill zoning board. I am concerned about the situation of the Brodessen Music Studios. It is a sad day when people try to stop a good man from earning an, an earning an honest living. I have known Gary Brodessen for over five years now, and I can personally tell everyone here that he is a decent, hard-working individual, who has helped many people in this community. He has helped many children in this neighborhood develop a love of music. Yet, what really bothers me is what, is that we are supposed to be a neighborhood and look, look after one another. We all share this place, we go, call home. Gary's, has gone out of his way to accommodate people, yet that doesn't seem to be enough. He had fencing installed professionally and soundproofed his studio all on his own expense, yet that is not enough. I live approximately 100 yards from his studio, and I can't hear the music that comes from there. My late neighbor's lawnmower makes more noise. Um, yet we all try to accommodate that. I find it disturbing that people have not tried to compromise and have brought this to this level. I want it to be known that I support Mr. Brodessen and believe that he has done his part. Now, it is up to others to be reasonable and act like responsible adults. Okay, so, again, we'll put this, give that to Pam, so it becomes part of the record. Okay, and then these are all his pictures, so, Gary, you want us to look at those?
Yes.
So, is there anybody else who wants to? Sure, come on up. Again, if we could just ask you to sign up. Folks, can I ask you to please turn off your cellphones? Apparently, there's some feedback that's affecting our, our secretary's ability to be able to record the meeting, so we do need cellphones off. Thank you. Yes?
I'm Georgiana Bernhardt, neighbor of Mr. Brodessen. Um, we first came here two years ago. And as I said, at that point, um, I, of course, you know, would prefer if I didn't have a neighboring house operating a business, but I would not want to deny him from, you know, earning that income.
Right, you did say that.
Yes. And I was willing to work things out, um, from day one. We had talked about some kind of privacy screening, and I think the board, you know, worked with me, um, and we had agreed at the time to have a fence erected the length of the driveway. And that didn't happen. It was only part of the driveway. So, I think that's my first question, why that didn't happen, the whole length of the driveway. And I think when we left off last month, you were going to find that out, as well as you were going to come to my property. You asked, do you have permission? Was I giving you permission?
Mm-hmm.
And I said, yes, please.
Right.
I would like for you to come into my house, to see how, from the second floor of my house, even the, it's a split level, so when you come up one flight, you're at the kitchen level, go up another flight, the bedroom level, and to see out the windows, to see what my view is from my end. I don't think anyone came to see from what I am looking at.
Okay, I, I was at your dri, I was at your driveway?
Were you?
At the mailbox, at your street?
Were you on my deck, in my yard?
I was not in your backyard, no.
That's what I requested.
No, that's fine.
So, and see what it's like from my whole back. Um, we had put an addition on to our house about 10 years ago, and had big, big windows, picture windows to look out into my backyard and into my gardens. Um, right now, half a fence is an eyesore. Uh, I don't know why half a fence was put up. Uh, that's not what we talked about two years ago. It's definitely an eyesore from my perspective, what, what I look at upon. Mr. Brodessen's passion is music, and that's great. My passion is gardening. I'm being denied that. I feel there's an injustice, because I've started a garden area, that back woodland section, I actually started planting some phycia back there to get a little bit of screening. The leaves are still on now. Come, probably around Thanksgiving, the leaves will fall off, so I will lose the rest of that screening that I, that was trying to, you know, hide some of that driveway. So, I guess at this point, um, I just feel that there is an injustice. I'm not able to go into that wooded area, that's, um, beautiful with rocks, and, um, create my woodland garden that I would like to create.
Okay.
I have started, um, entering some ferns into that area, native ferns, as well as some foreign ferns, and that is my goal, to create a beautiful garden back there. We started taking out some of the dead falls, we have a lot more work to do. But with half a fence there, and that kind of border, it just totally takes away from any kind of garden being created in that woodland area.
Okay.
So, you know, this is something that I'm asking, please, to make it not an eyesore.
Okay.
As far as the lights, they, you know, you have your opinion, I have my opinion from my perspective.
Talking about the fence, we were, uh, concerned about the length of the fence, as well as the condition of the fence. From the photographs that we have seen, the fence was erected in the last couple of years, and it was done professionally, because we have already made it part of the record, that it's more rocky, um, shale kind of a condition, so, you know, you don't have that much kind of growth, and you don't have, uh, a lot of topsoil to be able to put in kind of, uh, screening that would, one would desire. Having said that, our building department looked at the fence and felt that that fence, the way it was placed, was proper to, to, to achieve the purpose that we had, uh, discussed two years ago. So, as far as the fence is concerned, it was done professionally, and it was processed by our, you know, building department. Um, as far as noise concern, is concerned, we had talked about insulation, and that issue was also addressed. We have photographed showing the inside of Mr. Brodessen's, um, studio, that is professionally, um, insulated, and so the noise level, as you had often, you know, said in the past, has been brought down considerably. So, um, so I think, uh, both the applicant and the town zoning board, along with the building department, we have worked very hard to create a compromise situation. Um, and so, at this point, by extending the fence by a few feet, I don't think it's going to really achieve a big purpose.
It's more than a few feet, but the, has anyone measured that? The length of the driveway?
I, I agree with you, it's more than a few feet. It's, it's probably gonna be...
Halfway there, maybe?
It's probably gonna be another 60 feet. It's probably not even quite halfway.
The fence is not even halfway.
But the dilemma is that, because his property drops off so significantly right past his driveway, I don't know that he can honestly put a fence there.
No, it's pretty much leveled, his driveway. It comes down a little at the end, but I wouldn't expect it to go that close to the road, it would block obstruction.
Yeah, you probably could get...
There's a long distance. I know, I've gardened in there. Uh, there's quite a distance that the fence should have been put in. And our question last time, and I think you were going to answer that, was, um, why it wasn't? Why?
The, the building department worked on the draft resolution of the board. The board's resolution did not specify a length. They worked off of the draft resolution, which at point, at one point, I wasn't here, but at one point, there was a discussion that somehow established 47 feet, so...
Well, I think originally, it was supposed to be along the length of the driveway. I think that was the wording.
We, we never make it along the, the length of the driveway, because now you're creating sight problems.
Sight distance issues, right.
We never would do that.
Right, well, you wouldn't want to go along at the very edge, but there's still, as you saw, probably, there's a great distance that's not, that the fence is not at, and it's perfectly flat. Yes, there's maybe some rock that, uh, I had gotten an estimate a few years back, and they do have to take a hand drill for a few posts to put them in along there. But it's flat, it could be done. And from my perspective, it's just such an eyesore to have that, you know, my, the sightline is the driveway.
I'm a little bit confused, though. On one hand, I don't know how half a fence makes an eyesore. You're complaining about the look of the fence, now you want to make it bigger.
Yes, because it's cut off. It's my, you, I wish someone had come up onto my deck or in my house and see what I, I look out, and I have this...
How long is this fence?
Excuse me?
How long do you say the fence is that's existing?
What'd we say, was maybe 50?
50 feet.
I mean, 50 feet? I mean, I, so you think that adding another 30 feet to it's going to make it look all that different?
It will. If you look out of my window, you see this, um, it goes up in a hill.
I have a picture of it right here, I understand, all right?
Okay, okay, so there's a whole length I see of the driveway.
I'm trying to understand your ar, argument, that adding 30 feet to this 50-foot fence is going to make it look that much aesthetically different?
It actually seals off the length of the driveway, and that sightline is a straight fence, as opposed to, people have come in my house and said, what's that? You know? It, it's very awkward...
Or they probably say, why is it, does a fence have to be there? The answer is, the fence has to be there, because you didn't want to have headlights shining on your property.
Well, I don't want people walking in and out of my yard. I mean, it's a foot off of my yard, more what I hope to be my yard.
And people are not walking it off on your yard.
Excuse me?
People are, at this point, are not doing that.
Right, but we had requested the fence to give that privacy of people coming in and out the driveway. That was the original purpose of, I didn't want the fence, but in order to compromise, you know, so he could have his business, and his customers would not be, you know...
Okay, you know, we're not going to get into back and forth with you. Is there anything else that you'd brought, you'd like to bring to our attention?
Is there any consideration for the fact that that property is, you know, as far as creating a garden there, I would not be able to do that?
I don't understand why you can't do that.
Yeah, I don't understand why.
Visually, you need to come into my yard to look at it. And you need to see what it looks like when the leaves are off the phycia that I planted there just a couple of years ago, which is going to be most of the year. And no one, no one has given me that I had asked for someone to come to my yard to look at it, wait till all the leaves come off.
We're not obligated to do site visits, truly. I have a picture from the street, that's, I can see the fence. I can see what you're looking at. Am I seeing it as closely as you're seeing it? Probably not. But I, I can assure you, I can see the fence, and, you know, what's left of, of the vegetation that's there, and versus, there's not much left to come off the trees over in that area. And where your phycias are are truly not blocking the fence. So, I, I am concerned about really why you're...
They are screening the rest of the driveway, where his customers come in and out. So, I will have no screening there. And when I'm on my deck, as I explained earlier, in the early spring, when I'm on my deck trying to enjoy my property, um, you know, there are customers coming in and out, especially on a Saturday.
I mean, I'm not seeing that that's screening.
You don't see it unless you're on my deck.
That's, that's his driveway. I'm at the street, going up the driveway, and that's right at the edge of the fence. I mean, you can't see, you can see her house, yes, but you can't see it.
I agree, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not...
And I had asked for some privacy.
Again, we're not going to, we're not going to...
I'm not understanding the argument, so I don't have any questions, though. I don't understand.
Okay. I had asked for some privacy, and that's why we discussed, um, the trees would not work, and we said, okay, a fence. So, I don't think if he was going to put trees there, he would do half the driveway. I think he would have done the length of the driveway.
Okay.
But extending the fence is not going to give you greater privacy.
Absolutely would.
Why?
Because...
You want to put a fence all the way around his house? I don't understand that.
No, 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 just the length of the driveway, where the customers are coming in and out. So, if I'm sitting on my deck, the customers...
But these people are invading your privacy, just because you see a car, how does that invade your privacy?
It's not the cars, it's the people walking in and out.
They're going, they're, they're, they're to take music lessons, they're not going to be wandering on your property.
They're not looking to invade your privacy, they're not there taking pictures, they're not...
Um, they had, before all this was, you know, before all this started, yes. That's how it started, because I didn't know what was going on, when I saw people coming in and out. And, um, I startled someone one time, who was there waiting in the driveway.
Okay.
I have nothing further.
Anything else? Okay, anything else?
So, there's no consideration for...
It's not, we're, we're, this is a public hearing, we're hearing you, all right? We, this board will deliberate, but we have to hear from anybody else who might have something to say to us as well. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sure.
My name is Emery Beach, and my backyard faces his backyard. And the problem too is, if, especially during the summer months, I have a pool, I'm out there gardening, and you have the band playing, and, like I said, the windows have been open, because you can tell the difference in the noise level when the window is open, when the windows are closed. You can hear the difference in the volume. And as he says, that's where the property drops off, so that area right there just seems to echo. So, I really get a good portion of that sound barrier. If you go out to my front yard, to my, end of my driveway, you can barely hear it. But yet, the back seems to echo. And I also, about 10 years ago, put an addition off the back of my house. So, my house faces this way, the addition comes off this way, the pool runs this way, so all that area tends to echo. You get that? Yet, over the last two years, since this was all put into place, it seems that a lot it seems that a lot of the rules or options that were supposed to be with this were broken.
In what, I'm sorry, what rules are-
In what regards, that the bands were playing after nine o'clock, nine-thirty, nine-forty-five, we've still had music being played, that he said his lessons ran late, and yet the band still played beyond those hours. And I would like to know why, in a residential area, where is the homeowner? What are all rights? Where does this come into factor that I, on a Saturday, can't enjoy my pool because I have neighbors going in and out, I have children playing instruments, I have people singing, I have drums beating, bass guitars, you know, with their beat. And I feel that it's an invasion on our community as homeowners to be disrupted in a manner. I mean, this, I feel, is something that is, should be in a, a commercial zoning. This is a community, this is homes. These are people, where there are very few children left in our neighborhood, so it's mostly adults that, we go out on the weekend to enjoy our, our house, our home, our, where we're putting all our money. You know, we are updating, the first four houses on our road have updated their houses between additions, windows, pools, renovations. Everybody from the first house to the fourth house has made this community look nice. Not to mention the houses on the reverse side that are all doing the same thing. You walk around the corner and it just becomes a war zone. The grass isn't mowed for weeks on end, I guess it-
Let's stick to the topics related to the operation of a music studio.
So it's not being, it's not being viewed as a residential community. I feel it's being zoned as a commercial community at this point.
Let me also bring in, you know, again, as part of the record already, Mr. Brodessen has, you know, enjoys music, and there are two things happening. One is he's giving music lessons, and other is his friends or his-
His daughters, his daughter plays-
His children's friends, they play. So, you know, he has, he and his family have the right, along with their friends and family members and other people who might be visiting, to play music within reasonable hours in their home. Now, we are only, this applicant is before us only for the professional component of his passion. So we have to look at that professional component, and we have scheduled, we have tried to, you know, work with him on that. So, you know, we talked about the noise level, we talked about the, you know, people idling their cars, we talked about horns, we talked about people walking back and forth, parking, all of those issues, we have covered that in the last, in the last public hearing. So when we talk about them having music or any kind of instrumentation on weekend and evening past the scheduled hours, we don't know for a fact whether it was musicless related as part of his profession, or was it as part of his recreation for him and his family? And again, we don't have any clear records to go one way or the other. So therefore, we have to sort of confine ourselves to the schedule that he has presented before us and work with that schedule.
Okay, but why are you not taken into consideration that when I brought the last meeting, I brought a calendar and showed all the days and the times that his lessons went beyond? During the summertime, I'm out walking, I'm out walking at eight-thirty at night. It's nice, it's cooled down, and yes, there were cars still in the, in the road, so you know he's still giving lessons. You know what's going-
Again, you can't presume, he has children that might have friends over, you can't presume that he's giving lessons.
What cars are in the road are his clients, not friends coming for, these are his paid customers coming in.
How do you know that?
Yeah.
Because I also know these people. And I'm not gonna say that somebody walking in the yard is a friend coming to play. You know, they're walking in and they're saying, "Don't forget your check for him," at the street level. I mean, what more-
Could they be coming for a lesson and stay as a friend for coffee afterwards?
But then, wait a second, if you're hearing them say that, you're not in your house. You're then on his side of the street.
No, I can't be on his side of the street, my yard is fenced in, and it's half my property between him and I.
But your house is behind his-
And that all drops off, and it echoes, it echoes.
It's probably at least three hundred yards away, at least.
It's not quite that, but it is, it doesn't, but that's where it all echoes.
And somebody talking in a conversation zone, Gary, different-
I'll put it to you this way, during the wintertime, when there aren't the leaves on the trees, and he has children outside, I can hear the vulgarity of children, and I'm, children, young adults, I've heard them. I've called the police because of these parties that they're going until two o'clock in the morning, and asked them to, please ask them to, and they said, "Well, East Fishkill has no noise ordinance, so we can't do anything about it."
So it has nothing to do with music lessons?
Right.
It doesn't, but you can hear from my property.
We can't fix that, we can't fix that. Then there is a zoning ordinance that's being considered by the town board, and maybe that will give you some satisfaction, but-
Okay, so-
We're all over the place here. The consideration before us is can he have a business in his home for set hours? He's put that schedule before us, the answer is yes. If he violates that, maybe your answer is to bring it to the attention of the enforcement officer at the time the violation's taken place. I mean, I don't know. To come in, you say he did this, he denies it. We go out to check to see what he has, we take pictures inside, he's done the insulation as required, he's done everything. Say the window's open, a picture's taken, the window shows that it looks like it's open, but it's really not. We can't, as a factual determination, prove that either one of you is more correct than the other. All the objective things that we could look at, he's done.
Okay, so then what are his set hours? What time do the music lessons have to be done by? Because at nine o'clock, the music lessons are still going on, do I not have a right to be able to have my windows open and lay on my family, on the couch in my family room without being disturbed by music?
And you can play your stereo, and the sound might come out, and your neighbors might hear it. Yep, you could do that, you have the right to do that. And he has the right to do it.
Okay, but I'm not performing bands in my yards, I'm not having-
And they want to have a performing band in your yard, you can do that.
I'm not making a living out of my house either.
Okay.
The history of having home-based businesses goes along with you.
All right, let's, is there anything else you'd like to offer?
No, I just want to make sure that this was all done within guidelines, and that the guidelines are followed this time. Because the guidelines were not followed the last two years. And for the seven years that he's been giving these lessons, half of them, or five years of them, were without permits. And that's the only point I'm trying to make.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brodessen, can I ask you to come up here for one second and please confirm that the schedule here is what is your current schedule? Again, it's been represented that she hears music on Saturdays, according to this schedule, there's no lessons on Saturdays? So is this the, is this the current schedule?
No.
No, okay. Is it on the other one? Sorry? Oh, did we, did we put it in the file?
Yeah, he did give it to us.
Yeah. All right, that's right, because you're only showing lessons on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. And so you're done at eight o'clock on Wednesdays, you're done at eight o'clock on Thursdays, and you're done at seven o'clock on Friday. So there's no lessons on Saturday. But your daughter does play musical instruments, and your kids may be playing on the weekends or at other times.
You have some friends that come over sometimes.
Sure, which is-
When we say-
This is picture-
Oh, we do, we have it, thank you.
Just one question.
Not playing an instrument at least.
The question, the statement is, no, Wednesday and Thursday lessons at eight, that's when they end, that's not when they start.
That's done, right.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're done at eight o'clock. We do have the schedule in the, as of October eighth, two thousand and twelve, we do have that schedule in the file.
For the community and for the neighbors and for the public, we do have a schedule as part of this decision and order, and that's available to anybody. And if they want to track that schedule, they're welcome to get a copy from the, our zoning board of the office, and then they can follow that schedule because that's what, so the applicant has agreed to abide by. Also, because this issue is gonna be coming back in a few years from now, and so we want to make sure that if somebody's gonna be tracking, that they do have our official schedule to use for tracking purposes.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to speak for this application? Sure, come on up.
The only thing I'm gonna say is Gary taught my son, you know, years ago. He's off in college in music now, in business. I watched him teach other people for practically no money. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, for this, it's just kind of wrong. You know, he does what he does. And that's pretty much all I gotta say.
Thank you very much.
Please sign in.
Yeah, can we ask you to sign the clipboard on the table there?
I'm very passionate about this, because, because this man, I played drums, and I didn't learn until my fifties.
What's your name?
Well, good for you.
Linda Corn. And that's also my son that was in school. But I can't believe that these people could worry about fern and a, and a, for Cynthia. When I was, people, houses were blown away, you know, just a week ago. And I come, we come from Ridgefield, we drove all the way up here. We were in the dark for six days, okay? People's houses, fences were blown away, and she's worried about-
Let's stick to the topic of the conversation.
But, believe me, I've been going to his house for lessons.
Okay.
And nobody, nobody's been disrespectful to the property, nobody walks anywhere near. We have gone the latest, six P.M., once a week on a Saturday.
On a Saturday?
On a Saturday afternoon, I've been over his house. Six P.M. is the latest. We, we had given him a studio to practice for many, many years. And because of the economy, we, he lost the studio previous to that. This man, his passion is music and, and teaching it. And to take that away from him is, would be taking away his livelihood.
Excuse me, um, are you taking lessons, or is your-
I take lessons, yes.
Okay, and you said your, somebody, your child or somebody else?
My son took lessons previously for about, mm, eight years.
And you live, I believe, in Brookfield, Connecticut?
I, we live in Ridgefield.
Oh, Ridgefield, Connecticut.
And we took our lessons in Danbury, we didn't take them over here. Just recently, I started taking lessons.
Okay, so the Saturday was not at his home, the Saturday was in the other studio?
Yeah, in Danbury, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Sorry for the confusion there. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Yes, come on up.
Sign in afterwards. I'm Joanne Morgan, how are you? My children also took lessons from Gary years ago, my son's in college now. And I was here two years ago, I don't know if you remember, when some students, my son included, teenagers, friends, neighbors, parents of students came and spoke to the zoning board on Gary's behalf. And the decision was made that when he met his conditions, the fence, the soundproofing, the number of students coming weekly, that he would be allowed to give the lessons, and everything looks like it's been done, which is wonderful. So for me, to sit and now, almost an hour into it, and seeing that the permit obligations were met, you guys did your site visits, I've seen the fence personally because I live one road away, it's hard for me to have bitter people come and challenge a decision that seems like it was made and met. So I just want to speak on it, or end maybe on a positive note on Gary's behalf, that he does provide a wonderful service to the community, to the neighbors, to kids who could be out there getting in trouble and instead are playing wonderful music. And my son is playing music in college now, my daughter plays for the high school rock ensemble. And he really did provide a nice foundation for kids who could have gone astray, and I just wanted to praise him for that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Mary Beth Magnetti, and I spoke as well two years ago when Gary first applied. And I would like to just reiterate everything that Joanne has said, and also just remind you that when Gary does performances with the students, it's always a give back to the community. Those give backs are in terms of fundraisers. When he has those concerts, not at his house, elsewhere, they're fundraisers for the American Cancer Society, for local firehouses, and for veterans. So please keep that in mind, that what you're doing, in allowing him to have his studio and his lessons, you are also allowing a give back to the community. He provides so many wonderful things in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will just state for the record, by the way, that not only do I play the piano, but my daughter plays the trumpet. And so frankly, there's regular household noise associated with us playing musical instruments, so. And that, my neighbor, I'm sure, hears, so.
I have five electric guitars and three amps in my house, so.
Okay, all right, decision?
Are we gonna, you wanna make a decision now, or are we gonna-
Yeah, I don't know, just read it out.
Yeah.
In reference to appeal three, four, six, nine by the applicant Gary Brodessen, request an extension of a special permit for an accessory professional office to allow music lessons to be given in his home pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance, located at sixty-five Ritter Road, Stormville, New York. And whereas this resolution offered by zoning board member James Myers, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit for an accessory professional office to allow music lessons to be given in his home pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety of the zoning ordinance. And whereas this is a type-two action under Secwer, no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. Whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on October ninth and adjourned, and continued the public hearing on November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve. And whereas the schedule of class is proposed by the request of extension is reduced from the schedule approved by the existing special permit. And whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that Mr. Brodessen has adhered to the rules and regulations that were included in the decision, which were approved on October sixth, two thousand and ten, and last revised on January eleventh, two thousand and eleven, and he must continue to do so. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby extends this special permit for an accessory professional office for a term of two years from the date of the adoption of this renewed decision and order, at which time the applicant must apply to renew the special permit, and such permit shall be reviewed by the board. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Chara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries. Thank you. All right, please pass that down to Pam, because we made a couple changes to that. All right, we are on item number two, which is the public hearing for Homeland Towers. I don't want to keep hopes here if it's not likely that we're going to get a third member here. So we can either adjourn it at this point to December, or we can continue with the next public hearing, and-
I would suggest that we go for a second call.
Want to see what the applicant wants to do first?
Paul?
I'm not sure, I'm trying to figure out where I suppose I might, we're gonna, you should not be able to hold anything, but don't want to be here necessarily, it's really, uh, public service, we have, uh, no objection.
Adjourning it to December? All right, you want us to wait for one more public hearing, just in case? I mean, I don't know what to expect.
Did they try to call it again?
We tried, she tried again.
I figured she would.
Yes, several times.
Yeah, so, it doesn't, like I said, we, she, you would adjourn it?
So, you called her?
You called the separate person.
Yeah, I called her. It just doesn't go through. Okay, so do I have a motion to reschedule this for December thirteenth?
Are you using, you have one cell number, or if it's not-
We've tried all numbers, it's, all numbers, there's not.
Well, we can adjourn.
It's December eleventh.
We can adjourn.
The board without a quorum can adjourn, so even, even though two members are recused, the other two can adjourn, you can always adjourn.
I think we can take any motion, we're just gonna sit here.
Hold on, hold on, all right, so. No.
No, they can't do it.
Well, we're gonna adjourn it just between the chairman and myself, so.
We schedule it for December eleventh.
December, thank you, eleventh, thank you.
Eleventh.
I hereby move that based on the lack of form, that the meeting in reference to appeal three, five, six, nine, be adjourned until December eleventh.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, sorry, folks. Yes. The two board members that are recused, we have one whose spouse works for Verizon, and we have another that has property that has been actively looked at by Celotower Companies. Okay? So, to avoid any interest, conflict of interest, we don't- Are there any students, I was just gonna ask, are there any students that need their forms signed? We need to do ten. You weren't supposed to answer for her, she was supposed to tell me that. Pig is a senior class, so. Folks, can I, we, excuse me, we have additional public hearings this evening? Can I ask anybody who's for Homeland and does not want to stay?
I think it's just a bottleneck.
It's a bottleneck, thank you. Oh, not now, I have, I have other public hearings, I've got them. We're, we're still in the regular meeting. No. No, it's not. The secret ends once the board closes the public hearing. That's when the secret clock picks up. When the vote closes, closes, we have 62 days to make a hearing, to make a decision.
Well, we haven't had that many public hearings after we've had plenty of reviews.
All right, we are on item number three. If I can have quiet in the room? Is Mr. Delgrandy here? Is he outside, okay. I was hoping he was, you know, that the next app, I didn't realize it was him, so. Well. He's right here, please. All right, item number three, appeal 3599 Delgrandy, Angelo Delgrandy, 93 Spyglass Hill, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a 36-foot rear line and a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 12-foot by 20-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just trying to just to be complicated.
All right, so, since, at our last, we've had two reviews now of this application. Um, between the last two reviews, I did have the opportunity, as I reported to the board, to do a site visit out to Mr. Delgrandy's property. Um, and found that, you know, based on the slope of the terrain of the property, which slopes significantly downward from your, you know, from the rear line of your house, that you don't have many other options at all, honestly, you know, without, so.
And actually, as I recall, there's two parts to that. The slope, plus there's actually a natural grade that will lead up to where he will put his shed for access to the.
Well, but, 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 the slope goes down, then there's a swell, a drainage swell, diagonally cutting across his property to the lower corner of the property. But if you, he can, there's a, it means that for him to be able to circle around there, because there's a, beyond that, there's a flat area. And so, that's what, what he's proposing. Um, the only concern would be, again, whether, you know, I, I don't know if your neighbor's here and that's what we want to hear, whether there's any screening that might be necessary, you know, in the event that this is, the site of the shed might be something that your neighbors.
Okay, I, my, my neighbor, one of my neighbors is here.
Okay, we'll let them speak, that's fine.
Okay, fine.
All right, is there anything else you wanted to add to the review that I?
Not now, I'd like her to speak and then, and then I'll.
All right, are there any comments or questions from board members first? 93 Spyglass Hill. Okay? So, is there anyone here to speak for or against Mr. Delgrandy's application? Do we want her on the record too?
She's right over in Peanut Gallery.
We start 'em young, don't worry.
Yes, that's right, my support. Um, good evening, my name is William Schwartz. That is my fiancee Heather Dawn and my child. And I see Angelo and his parents here. And I'll start by saying he is a great neighbor. Um, but, the issue here is that there's gonna be a shed basically put practically on my property. Uh, my property is behind his property. It's almost like a flagpole, if you would imagine. My driveway, uh, is 480 feet and I measured it because I have to have it plowed every time it snows. And that is expensive. Um, but, when we first saw the property prior to buying it three years ago, the thing is, when you come down the driveway, you see the front of the house. And quite frankly, it was majestic and we knew we wanted to purchase it right off the bat, that view. And we have friends and family up, same thing. They say, as we came down the driveway, wow. And, uh, where Angelo wants to put the shed is basically right on the corner of his property. And that would completely obliterate the view of our house. Um, the shed, as proposed, I think is 12 by 20. No mention of a height, but you've got to imagine that, you know, it's gotta be at least 10 to 15 feet in the air when you have a, a roof that's designed to allow the snow and rain come off. And, uh, now it's even gonna block the view. It's going to block our view from looking out. We, we can see the street now, we can see if the garbage cans have picked up. People have their garbage cans picked out. And that, that will block it. It will block the, uh, the radio signal from our drive for our garage door openers as you come down. You'll have to wait almost till you get to the bottom. And, uh, most importantly, if you look out of windows, all the bedrooms are on that side of the house. So, every single view from every bedroom in the house will basically be of this shed. And again, I don't want to, to not accommodate him, I just want to do it in a fair matter. So, I did meet with him, we went up, we surveyed different areas on his property that would accommodate a shed. And there were five different areas that would accommodate a shed. However, um, some of the areas, he indicated that he had drainage already built on the east end. And if there was a problem, uh, that it would be more expensive for him to repair that drainage. And, uh, there were other locations that I felt were appropriate. And they were appropriate, but the issue that Angelo had was that, uh, he said he paid a lot of money for the view of the golf course and he didn't want to block his view. And, uh, my position is that if a view has to be blocked, it's his shed, that it should be his view and not my own. And, uh, we spoke with a broker because, uh, you know, obviously, we're concerned about what it's gonna do to the property value. And we were told in no uncertain terms that it will decrease my property values. I want him to have a shed if he wants to have a shed. My biggest supporter's right there. Um, and I want to work with Angelo.
You brought your own stupid cheering section.
That's right. He, he has been great, he's been a great neighbor. And I really, I, I like the man. He's genuinely a nice man, he's been nice to my, to my family and myself.
Is there some screening that you feel could help?
No, I mean, this shed is.
Again, it's still gonna block, I, I understand.
It's 12 by 20.
When I was out there, you know, as I specifically said, your, your neighbor in the back is gonna be now looking at this.
Right.
You know, yes, there's a fence as well, but, you know, I, I, we talked about, there may be some need to do some screening or something because when you're looking out the front of your house, you're, you're gonna, it's, it's gonna be in your.
It's there. And it's not something that I don't think can be screened, it's large. I mean, 12 by 20 is, is a large structure and that doesn't even, you know, factor in the height.
Yeah, but he could put some evergreens behind it to block it from what you're looking at. So, you then see a white fence and the evergreens.
Right, well, no matter what.
But that's not gonna stop your view as you're coming down your driveway. I absolutely agree with you.
It's gonna completely block that view.
Except that potentially, you could put trees along the side there.
Right.
But it's not, it's still gonna block the view of your home, so.
Absolutely, and, and it's just, it's a large structure. I know that he intends to put, um, I think, a tractor in it or something. And just, you know, the in and out access is gonna be constantly near my property line. And again, I don't have any issues whatsoever with him and his family, they're nice people, it's just that, um, I'm thinking long-term if we decide to stay here. And even longer-term, if we ever decide to sell, this is something that we've been advised is gonna negatively impact the value of the property, and that is certainly a concern. Um, I, I think there are other locations on the property that it can be put, um, we went over them. And I understand there are issues with cost about leveling other areas out perhaps.
Right, probably would have to go on stilts and other things.
Right, and, and quite frankly, that, there is a solution here other than blocking my property. While it may cost more money.
Can you do me a favor?
I'm sorry.
And your, your jacket's rubbing on it, that's what's causing the noise.
Okay, um, there may be other areas where he can actually place a shed that may cost more and may not be ideal for him because it blocks his views. But, again, um, it's, it's not my shed. And it's not, you know, if anyone's view, I would like it to be his view if he feels it's necessary. Um, there are other locations that even, his view won't be blocked and the problem is only a potential problem. If there is a problem with the drainage, then it might cost him more money to repair the drainage having a shed on top. Again, that's speculative and, and there may never be a problem with the drainage. And I don't believe that putting it down there in the corner of my property is, is the best solution for, for the parties. Um, I understand that he has a neighbor on the other side in some of the places that I suggested. I understand there's a golf course as well. Um, I understand that he submitted letters to the, from the neighbor and from the golf course already?
No.
Oh, okay, all right, um, that he has them. And, and I understand why they wouldn't object because, quite frankly, it doesn't block any of their views and it's not right on top of their property. Um, but.
Well, the neighbor to his right, it would block his view.
Well, there's.
Of the golf course.
To his.
To his right, if you're at the top of his driveway, the neighbor to his right, if he put it anywhere, if he put it on the other side.
It's a potential neighbor, there's nobody here to object because it's, it's an unused lot at this point.
The lot behind, the lot next to you. But the other house next to him.
Over, well, there, yes, there, I guess they would be able to.
If they were wanting to look over at the golf course, they would be looking diagonally through his yard.
Right, they, they would eventually, and certainly.
But as, as, uh, Mr. Delgrandy pointed out, to me, other neighbors to his left put up fences and other landscaping that blocked his view to some extent of the.
That's all, right. Um, so I'm just hoping that we can come to some sort of solution. Um, I understand it might cost more.
So, did the, the two of you come up to an alternate, agreeable solution?
Well, we, we spoke about it, um, but we didn't come to an agreement.
No, this is his opportunity to speak, please let him finish.
We did, I, I, I pointed out at least five different locations. And I, I can't say for sure if there was three this way or two that way, where part of the problems with three of the locations I, I presented was that it would be more expensive or more difficult to put a shed there. Um, and part of the problems were, two of the, the places were fine, it wouldn't be any extra expense. But, like he said, he paid a lot of money for that view of the golf course and he doesn't want to block it. So, um, I just, I, I'm honored to be able to speak here tonight, to present my views. Um, and again, I, I really don't want any hard feelings because he's a nice man, has always been there since we've been there. Um, it's just that we don't want what we consider an eyesore and, um, something that would negatively impact the value of our property. So, I'm hoping that we can resolve this.
I, I understand, like I said, when I was out there, I specifically was concerned about what your, what your perception of that was going to be.
Any view you look at, I mean, we have windows right there above the garage.
It's gonna be right in front of you.
It's right there, I mean, it's right there.
I agree.
He, I'm sure he will keep it up, up to, up to code. I'm sure he'll put the proper plantings in. But there's no guarantee that if, uh, him and his family ever sell the home,
Right.
that the person coming in is not gonna let it fall into disrepair or, or do other things with it.
No, I agree.
So, those are our concerns and I'm glad to have.
No, thank you for coming, I appreciate your taking the time to come and give us your views here.
I actually had a question for you, sir. Sir, before you go.
I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at the aerial photograph. Do you have trees or something planted along your driveway now?
Um, I, I wouldn't, I don't think they're, I don't know what they are, to be quite frank, they're about six foot, seven foot tall. They look like shrubs to me, not necessarily trees because there's no real, uh.
Evergreen?
Yeah, but they're not really evergreen either, they're.
But they're not getting bigger?
They haven't grown an inch in three years, really, you know. We've had them trimmed once. Um, I don't, I don't want to say they're trees, they're more bush-like. They're something that you would screen maybe your, uh, air conditioning units with. So, you know, six, seven feet high. Um, some of them seem to, uh, need water because they're not, they're not the same height as the other ones, those are shorter ones. But the tallest ones coming down the driveway, I would say, are no more than eight feet. And, uh, they were there when we moved in, they lie in the driveway on both sides. I think the builder must have, uh, thought they'd be a good idea to screen the property, um, from his property. But they're not, they're not wider than, than this, uh, this easel. And they're, they're certainly not taller than, than seven, eight feet the most coming down the driveway.
Thank you. Any, is, well, is there anybody else to speak on this application? No, okay.
Likewise, I'd like to say that, uh, Bill Schwartz and his fiancee Heather have been great neighbors. Um, unfortunately, I've exhausted all other options as far as where I can place the location of the shed. I think it's speculative on his part to say that his garage door opener's gonna work, like, even halfway up his driveway because it's so long, mine barely works from the street. Mine's probably a quarter of the length of his driveway. That's only one, uh, point of view. The other thing is, um, I actually have photos going down his driveway and he does have evergreen trees that probably grow 12 to 15 foot tall. And in my wheelchair, I'm sitting about the same height as you would in a car. And they block off a good part of that view of my shed that you would see, I believe, according to looking at these photos. Um, I, I have a little, uh, outline here that I'd like to present to board and also some photos.
Okay.
And, um.
Jim will come in.
But, um, as far as the look of the shed, I mean, it's gonna be vinyl sided, similar to my house. It's gonna have, uh, plastic shutters similar to what's around my garage. And it's gonna have vinyl windows with screens. And as far as upkeep, I mean, that goes with anybody's house. Billy might sell his house and it might look like a mess if somebody buys it years later too. I mean, when I first bought my house, I did pay additional monies to see the golf course to have trees removed. Had I not removed my trees, Billy's house wouldn't even be in view, nor from his driveway. So, I mean, these are things that I did for view. And then, the neighbor before Billy, the previous owner, evidently that realtor, now, I believe Billy's getting this information from his fiancee's realtor, according to what I understand, as far as the value of the home being depreciated. I had someone look at my home and the property and where I planned to place the shed the other day, who is, uh, an appraiser. And he says, "My shed, with, with the quality that I'm getting, uh, should not depreciate that house." And he says, "If you want, if any board member would want to contact him about that, I'd feel free to give you his number." But, I mean, I, I had the, the golf, I have the letters from the golf course owner, Mr. Phil Shatz. I mean, everybody that gets up on that tee, which practically borders my property, every, every golfer can make a comment about my shed. If it was that, it was gonna be that much of a distraction or a, uh, an unsightly, uh, structure, you know, I, I believe he would have opposed it. And also the lot, uh, J, or next to Billy's, that vacant lot that we speak of, that's owned by Rieger Development. They gave me a letter in there of approval for the shed also. They gave me a letter in there of approval for the shed also. So they would have to be concerned with when they sell that house, the view there also. And I don't know, I don't know what else I could say except I've exhausted. I have a map in there of my irrigation system on, I believe, the ninth page. That shows, Billy and I talked about trying to put it close to my house. You and I talked about the other side. I have drainage there. I mean, the ground's uneven for me being in a wheelchair. As far as use, my tractor, I usually store in the garage. I have room for that. But my truckster, which I use on occasion, only seasonally to spray weeds and take it out for recreational purposes in the yard. I wouldn't be accessing the shed all that many times. It'd only be seasonally. And on that outline that I gave you, I mean, have, right now I have a permit to finish off my basement, but I have lawn furniture in there. I have my grill in there, my basement. I have so much clutter because I have nowhere to store these things and I can't even finish my basement. But, you know, I would definitely, you can see I take care of my property. I don't let the grass.
No, your property was meticulous, yeah.
I mow my own lawn. I do a lot of maintenance myself. And, you know, I wouldn't let that get out of hand.
So I guess my first question for you, Mr. Del Grande, is 12 foot by 20 feet is literally, it's the size of another garage.
So if you look at, well, I don't know if you can see it from those photos.
Have you thought about shrink, have you thought about a smaller shed?
I don't, I don't believe it would be suitable for the equipment. I mean, you saw how big my truckster is. It's fairly large. I mean, it's still, it's not the size of a car, but I have other things to go in there. I have lawn furniture and everything.
To remind the board, he did have a lift in his garage that had all sorts of extra materials, snowblower and things like that.
And God forbid you saw my basement. I mean, I had a lot of clutter in there. But, I mean, this picture here pretty much tells it off on my yard. If you want to take a look at this.
I mean, this fence is five foot tall. The section is about five feet of the post. So it's going to go about seven foot in.
All right. For the record, again, I'm going to, just reading the letters that Mr. Del Grande has presented to us, there's one letter from you yourself. So you're representing to us some of the things that you've written in there. There's a letter dated October 25th from Rieger Homes, Stephen Rieger. "Mr. Dear Mr. Del Grande, you have advised us that you intend to install a shed on your property located at 93 Spyglass Road, Hopewell Junction, New York. In accordance with the Declaration of Restrictions dated January 14, 2004, you are required to obtain the permission of Legends of Beekman LLC. You have submitted us to us the following: map of survey for lot 157, Section 7, Beekman Country Club subdivision dated August 23, 2012, prepared by Robert V. Oswald Land Surveying, showing the proposed location and size of the proposed shed, two order form and product sheets from BJ's including shed specifications for the proposed shed, showing the details for the shed proposed, vinyl siding, barn style roof, et cetera. The undersigned Vice President of Rieger Development Corp., but then Member of Legends of Beekman LLC hereby consents to the installation of such shed in such location, subject to obtaining, the obtaining of permits and approval from the Town of East Fishkill as needed required." There's a second letter here from Beekman Golf, signed by Philip Schatz, dated October 30th. "Dear Mr. Del Grande, after review of the placement of your proposed shed and the design and color of it, the Architectural Committee is pleased to approve the construction of that shed. Please know, however, that you still have to get approval from the Town of East Fishkill to construct a structure under their building code." Always a pleasure to have agencies remind people to get permits and approval from the town. All right. So those are the letters that you provided. Again, as you mentioned, there's specifications here. There's an irrigation plan. There are other materials here. This is for our record?
Yes, that's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, I.
Your access to the shed, it's going to be in the same corner.
No, it's in the opposite corner. I have to cut across. Because right now, there's drainage that the developer set up. It's surface drainage that runs from right diagonally down to the left into the easement. That's where all the water drains to the left of Billy's property, down the back.
The shed going in this corner.
Right corner, right.
The right hand corner is the same size as your driveway, but you're going to access it down the other side.
Down the left side.
Why can't you move it more to the middle?
Because there's not enough room. Where that natural drainage comes, there's drain line coming right across diagonally. So that's kind of a triangular area.
I'm not worried if, though, the drain line.
Yes.
The drain line is what, eight?
It's an eight inch surface drain line. It picks up from three catch basins on the right side of the yard.
Is it buried?
Oh, yes. No, I installed, Billy's yard was getting flooded out. The developer originally used surface drainage. So I came in and put an eight inch drain line across my property to pick up all the water. So it's picking up all the right side and draining it across the natural swell that the developer, well, not natural, I mean, the developer put it in, but the swell that runs down into the easement. The water runs down toward.
You can't move it over five feet even to accommodate any of his concern. I mean, this has to be the exact location. You can't move it over 10, 15, 20 feet. You can't move it at all. Maybe not as far as he wants.
I did move it. Originally, I wasn't going to have it that far and I was going to have it three foot in. So I did consider that. And I moved it as far as I can to have the ramp now and for everything to work out right. Originally, I was going to have it three foot off my fence. Now it's seven foot off my fence.
So the answer is you can't move it more to the center at all?
I mean, if you're talking fractions of, you know, a foot or something, I don't think it's going to, it's not going to change, it's not going to give him what he wants being in that corner because I'm confined in the size of area where I can place it. But it's the most level spot. I mean, I have all the reasons why on that outline here. I mean, it's not just for aesthetics for me to see the golf course. Yes, that's a major concern. But also I have irrigation lines all throughout my property. That's the only place where I can place that shed without even having to touch the irrigation piping. I can just change heads to make it up or maybe some funny pipe, but there's no major changes I have to make, not even for the grading, because it's the most level spot.
According to your irrigation plan, your lines all end at the same point.
If you look.
The distance from your house.
What I'm talking about is far as placing it with, in the piping, without having to dig any of that up. But, I mean, that's only one reason.
Well, I mean, I think it's an important reason. I think that if you have.
It's mainly the drainage. I mean, the drainage is a bigger concern than my irrigation pipe, although that comes into play also.
So how far is the drainage pipe from where the shed is now?
I can only approximate. I don't, you know, I don't have that.
How far from the shed placement would be?
I'm sorry?
From where you plan on placing it, where is the drainage pipe? How far away is it?
Drainage pipe might be from the left corner of the shed, I'd say to, I don't know, maybe, maybe a few feet, if that.
You're not answering the question.
I don't have specifics on that. I'm sorry.
Well, then, how do you, that's my question. How do you know that you're blocking it if you don't know where exactly it is?
No, it's not just that. The entry to my shed is on the golf course side.
Yes.
So.
And you're coming across your property. So I'm.
Right, but there's drainage.
I'm not getting why you can't move it over 20.
Because there's a drain line that cuts right across and I left just enough room for that shed to be placed so that I can go up that ramp with my equipment and my wheelchair. Otherwise, I hit that swell that cuts across and the drain line is just below that, underneath the ground.
You walk down the swell, then come back up and then get into the shed?
On a shallower side, on the left side, yes. Yes. And then I have to cut across.
Your neighbor, you know, put yourself in your neighbor's shoes. And from his house, it's a flag lot that we already know. And he is looking on one side of the golf course. On the other side, it would be this particular shed. So if you're sitting in your neighbor's front yard or in the front of the house, you're going to see this huge shed facing, and then there's a distance to your house. And so he has given you several options. They may not be the most, they may have a cost factors to it, but I think you should look at from his perspective that by moving it to a different location and maybe letting go of one of your drain lines or something, or severing, or capping a drain line and moving it closer to your property so that your view may be partially blocked to the golf course, but then he doesn't have to look at it because it's only like less than, I got very, very close. I mean, looking at it from his property, it looks like it's right in his front yard. I mean, this particular shed. So you have to make an extra effort to move it to a location which creates a situation that he doesn't have to look at that particular shed and that you may have to spend a few more dollars so that you get what you're trying to accomplish.
But understand something here. The neighbor bought a flag lot with their front yard being his rear yard.
Yeah.
Okay. He could move that shed if the land was flat, okay? That being said, he could move that in to the setback and the neighbor would still look at the shed and not have any recourse at all.
Could I, can I, can I make one other?
He also bought a property with setback requirements for his neighbor.
Right, exactly. And so that's why, to the extent that if the property were flat and he could put it within the setbacks, he wouldn't even be here.
Can I make one other comment?
Mm-hmm.
I started to mention, I don't think I mentioned the whole story before, but the previous owner had a.
Of which lot?
The one where Billy is.
Okay.
He had planted those trees around the perimeter or that side, the back of my property, like seven foot or eight foot beyond my fence, and then those along his driveway. And my neighbor planted trees all along his property because I was told by the neighbor on my left that the neighbor in the back wanted to screen my fence, screen my property with trees. So, you know, I don't understand that because if you look at those photos going down the driveway, those trees that he has that are existing, I can't understand it because it looks like they would block a good part of my shed. Because they block almost up above the windows of the garage.
They're too far apart. They're not doing a job of screening it.
But you looked at those photos?
I'm looking at it right now. And we have the photographs that you provided that shows those.
Yeah, they're too far apart.
Because when I was driving down, to me, it looked like it would screen a good part of it. I don't know.
Yeah. Again, the photos that you provided from the front of your gate, looking down your backyard into his, front of his house, I mean, I can just imagine this particular shed blocking that particular view and just creating, I mean, changing the character of the neighborhood substantially. So again, as you have pointed out, that he bought the flag lot knowing these restrictions, you also bought a property having setback requirements. And so if you want to be within the setback, fine, no problem. But if you want a variance, then you have to come with a, come with a solution that is acceptable to you and your neighbors.
Right.
So that being said, again, we have a ton of other public hearings we have to get to tonight. Is there anything else that you want to offer us? Do you want us to close the public hearing whereby we make a decision? Or do you want to think about this and come back again next month and maybe the two of you discuss a little bit more, explore what your options are?
Yeah, I mean, I'll readdress that spot, but like I say, to put it up on the upper side of my lot.
We don't need to readdress the things you've already said to us. At this point, it appears that, as I was concerned about, there appears to be an issue with your neighbor who has a right to the lot that he was, you know, that he bought. He has a right to make sure that your property is maintained as it should be in accordance with the setback requirements. We have to consider his opinion here. So we really, I'd encourage you to explore.
Sure. I just, I, but you know what?
Part of it, again, might be shrinking it, seriously.
I'm sorry?
Or I don't know why it can't get moved over, you know, another 15 feet or something. Maybe that helps. I mean.
Because there's a hill there. The drain.
Figuring down a little bit. I don't know. I mean, you know, is it that?
Yeah, but what happens is, I mean.
No, please, we're not going to revisit it again here. All right. At this point, I think you've heard our concern. You've heard your neighbor's concern. You've heard our reaction to the neighbor's concerns. I think, let's think about it for another month. We'll have you come back again next month to see if you propose anything different. But at this point, I think we have to.
I think I'll leave it in your hands to make a decision then. Because for me, if I don't have it there, it won't work any other place. So, I mean, if you wanted to deny it, I'll let you do that.
So do you want us to, do you want us to close the public hearing?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Close and reserve?
That's fine.
All right, because I think we have to.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay.
A second.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We close in just, so next month, we'll have a decision on, we'll come to a decision. Or we have two, actually officially, we have two months to come to a decision, but we will try to come to a decision at the next month.
So how will we know whether or not there's been a decision reached? I mean, should we, do we, are we supposed to show up next month?
You do not have to be here. You can be, or you'll get the letter a couple days after the meeting. That will tell you what the decision is.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Item number four, Appeal 3604, Bertielli, Vincent A. Bertielli, 17 Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a seven foot sideline variance for an existing 12 foot by 12 foot deck pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. All right, so your.
And I have two items to submit in.
Okay. Do I, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I didn't look that way yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Go ahead. When we last saw you, I'm just looking for my notes last time. Yeah, that's fine. So you have an existing deck?
Yes.
That came with the property that, what your sense is was that when the house was built, this was what was built with the house?
Yes, and that was, and it was cleared. It came up as a question during the purchase of the house and the town cleared it, that it was okay.
And so now.
It's pretty.
Yeah, based on the condition of it, you're looking to replace it.
Instead of repairing, it was replaced. And this is also another submission. Just checking with my neighbor to make sure they were okay with it.
Does that special design in the deck?
Yeah. What year was this built? Oh my God. That's a bizarre railing, that's for sure. All right, we have.
And so that's checking with my neighbors if they were okay with the deck and then just putting it into a letter. So that's.
It looks like you saved your neighbors from coming here. So we have a lot, there's no date. Okay, various neighbors signed, it looks like, on October 9th, related to the variance request by Vincent Bertielli, the homeowner for the replacement of the side deck at the residence at 17 Saddle Ridge Drive. Signatories, by signing below, you are affirming the following. I'm aware that, one, I'm aware that the replacement deck will be exceeding the East Fishkill Town zoning code, which requires a setback of 25 feet from the property line. Two, the replacement deck proposed by the homeowner will not detract from the neighbor's appearance. Why don't you say it will be the exact same size it is, as it is now?
That would have made more sense, probably. Sorry, it was my first legal document.
No, that's okay. So again, just for our records, the signatures here are from a Christine Raphaeli?
Raphaeli, I think.
Okay. 15 Saddle Ridge Drive, Richard Walker, 19 Saddle Ridge Drive, Mark Kloppfer, 16 Saddle Ridge Drive.
And just as far as where they are, that's neighbor directly across and then neighbors directly to the left and to the right.
Okay. So any comments or questions from board members?
I just, that's the thing. He's replacing, same size. Apparently, it predates the current requirement.
Right.
Since it's already been cleared by the town. So no objection. I would like a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, I got to ask if there's anybody there first. Any other comments or questions from board members? Is anybody here to speak for or against the appeal for Vincent Bertielli, 17 Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a seven foot sideline variance for an existing 12 foot by 12 foot deck? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. In reference to Appeal number 3604 by Vincent Bertielli, requesting a side foot sideline variance for the existing 12 by 12 deck located at 17 Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, New York. And whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a seven foot sideline variance for an existing 12 by 12 foot deck, and whereas this action is a type II action under CQ and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on October 31, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals has held a public evening, hearing this evening, November 13, 2012, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the applicant has replaced a deck of the same size in the same location which has existed there for a period of extensive years. Desire resolved cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant purchased the house with a deck the same size, the same distance from the property line. The variance request is not substantial. The proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and the difficulty in adhering to the area requirements of the law was not created by something the applicant did or proposes to do. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves the request made by Vincent A. Bertielli, 17 Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, who is requesting said seven foot sideline variance for an existing 12 foot by 12 foot deck for Section 2, Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. And be it further resolved that within five business days of adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town court and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself. Aye. Your motion carries. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get that striping again.
All right. Item number five, Appeal 3605, De Batista. Michael De Batista, 10 East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to construct a 1,000 square foot detached garage pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
I have some documents I'd like to submit.
Okay, great. Yes, when we met with you last, again, the issue that you're here is you're asking for, you can approach, that's fine. You're asking for a garage that's oversized to the town code. And so when we met with you last, we did ask you if you could explain why you need a garage this size. We asked you for a floor plan. So we asked you for some information related to your use of it.
That's it.
So first off, I see the sign is up. That's a good thing. Yes.
Well, what that picture also indicates is the topography of the street level to my property, which you can see, it's quite, you know, covered with trees and whatnot. You can't even see the house from the street level. If you look through the documents I provided, it's multiple pictures concerning the property, the existing shed that's going to be removed. And also, if you go through the floor plans, you'll see we laid out all the vehicles and recreational vehicles that you requested.
I was going to use the word toys, but.
Toys. Couple of them. And naturally, if you have any questions as you browse through the documents, more than happy to add to them.
How about the second floor? Do you give us a?
I did. There's just going to be shelves up there for storage. Uh, I did, uh, there's just going to be shelves up there for storage.
Again, there's no plumbing being proposed here?
No, ma'am.
To provide any heat or anything like that, and then?
No.
And so are you going to have a driveway that takes you all the way out to this?
Uh, well, it's not that far from, uh, the existing driveway. The original plans that were submitted.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, but it wasn't connected to your driveway, right?
Uh, well, there's going to, it's not connected to the existing, I have to put more pavement.
But you will, you will be doing some paving to get out there, okay? Thank you. So, any questions or comments from board members?
For the record, I'd like to state that I did do a site visit, um, and the applicant did take me into his property and showed me the location, and we discussed, uh, several options, and then, um, and whenever those issues come up, I'll address them.
That's it?
No, I mean, the only issue is the size, right?
All right, all right.
He's not, he's not looking for setback requirements or anything like that.
So, let, let's get a couple comments, and then, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal by Michael De Batista, ten East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance for a one-thousand square foot detached garage? Come on up.
I have a question.
Mr. De Batista, why don't we ask you to step away from the podium?
Well, we have, if you're going to speak out loud, we need your name and everything.
I'm not respond, I'm a neighbor, I live on the next street.
Okay.
My neighbor's property would, uh, uh, abut this property, and I'm a, my property's about thirty feet from it.
So you're within the five hundred square foot, the five hundred foot area around this property, that's why you got it?
Yes, yes. Uh, and my question is, what would the normal zoning of such a building be, the size of it?
Normally, he would be limited to sixty percent of the size of the footprint of his house, or seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Whichever is larger.
Okay.
So, he's, in essence, he's asking for an extra two hundred and fifty square feet.
All right, I'm just considering, uh, a building that, uh, at a thousand square feet, uh, footprint, is the size of my house on the next street. And now I see it would be a two-story building, so it would be exactly the size of my house on the next street, and I would be looking at, in effect, two houses in this one piece of property.
That's why we're holding the public hearing.
And again, the size that would be normally permitted would be what?
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty square foot.
Okay, two stories?
Correct.
Well, it can go up to twenty-five feet high.
Yes.
So, twenty-five feet normally allows for two stories, yes.
Okay.
He's doing what we typically call a story and a half, with a, you know, because the front of it, if I'm correct, will be a twelve-twelve inch, so from the front of the building, it will look like a one-story.
Right.
Okay. All right, that answers my question so far, thank you.
Do you have any comment, one way or the other, except you're concerned that it's going to look like there's two houses on the property?
Um, it would, it, I would prefer, um, that there would be no other building there, but of course, he has a right to do that.
Can we show you what it's going to look like, just so you can?
Okay.
This would be the.
The front of it.
Which would be facing the driveway.
It faces the driveway.
Right, his driveway, his house, right. But there's, there's the other sides too, so you're concerned about what you would be seeing from a different side?
He's putting up a fairly nice building.
Aesthetically, it looks beautiful, but, my only question is, if we all did that, there's the density of the neighborhood.
Do you see this?
And right now, it's only a question as opposed to a complaint, it's my first awareness of it.
Yeah, that, that's fine, do you actually see his yard?
Very clearly.
You do?
Yeah, suddenly, by the removal of the wooded area that was there.
Okay.
I now see all of that property, in fact, into the next street.
Okay. Thank you.
We do need you to check in, do you need it now?
Oh, yeah, if we could ask you to sign in, thank you. Is there anyone, oh, yes, there's another gentleman here.
Hi, my name is, uh, Jason Clark, um, I just have been away for the last few weeks, so I just got this notice, so I haven't had a chance to actually look where this property, uh, meets mine, but obviously, it's somewhere within the range, and, um, just the sheer size of it just made me concerned if it is the property that, uh, butts directly up to the back of my property. Do you have a, uh, site map?
If you want to come up here real quick, I can show you the, the aerial, and so you can see, all right, here's the cul-de-sac that his property is on, this is his lot.
Okay. It'll be right here where the, you know, the number six is.
This looks like one large property behind here?
Here, here's a better view.
Well, no, that's, that's just his property.
No, that's, the applicant's property, this is his driveway comes.
He's trying to figure out where he is, Aziz.
He's up here.
Am I on this one?
Correct. So, and his, this proposed location is right next to his, end of his driveway.
Okay, so I'm this way?
Correct.
Okay, so.
There's lots along here.
This is his property here?
Correct. This is what it looks like, I think.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to put that last comment on the record, though?
Can we just ask you to sign in, please?
You're not concerned about it, is that?
No, I am not concerned about it.
Can we ask you to sign in, please?
Yeah, I already have.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so is there anyone else here to speak for or against the appeal by Mr. De Batista? What's the pleasure of the board?
Um, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, do you mind if I ask you which house that you live in?
Um, number nine, Sebastian Court. The house right behind you is, uh, this apartment, the red house, up the one, the next up the street. So, the owner of my property was just up there to me.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't.
So, are the two of you neighbors, then?
No, we, uh, I'm number three, so there's two of them.
Oh, okay.
The actual people that are that is probably out here.
Okay.
And who's based on you is that?
I, I don't know their last name, I just know them.
Young couple or?
Uh, there's a young couple behind me to the left, uh, but directly behind me is the red house, yeah.
So, you're on i- i- either sides of those two?
Either side of the two.
Okay, so you, so this gentleman here is this lot here?
Correct.
Okay.
The only question I had was one of the sort of side comments I thought might hear was, was the trees are gone, was this, were trees taken down?
Uh, there was brush, uh, behind my house when I moved in three years ago.
Oh.
There were no trees, every tree that, uh, was existing is still existing. There was just immediate brush, three-foot height, four-foot height, nothing higher than that was taken out.
Something recent. Do you plan on taking any trees down to put the structure?
There are, uh, two trees that I would need to take down, um, they're, what I would refer to as saplings, not trees.
Okay, just wanted to make it clear.
Correct, there are basically four trees at the location, and the app, whether you, and they're basically, as the applicant said, they're kind of more like sampling, or, or sampling, or, uh, they're kind of, you know, not really huge.
Not, yeah.
They're not very big, uh, so whether you remove one or four wouldn't really make a difference.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one of the problems that he faces, which he showed to me with, at the existing shed, when these trees, shed leaves, they actually, um, damage the roof of the existing shed, and you could see the, the, the environmental damage to the existing shed, so that's why he prefers to go a little bit higher, so that it prevents, um, you know, leave accumulation, and it gets some light, and so naturally, uh, it'll, it'll be less the care of the property.
I might add, um, did you, so happen to see that, all the pines that I planted? Okay, I'm going to add that to the record, if you look at the documents, you'll see around the perimeter of my property, I planted four, forty blue spruce.
Okay.
They're approximately eight feet, I don't know how tall they're going to grow, but in the next ten years, they won't be able to see anything.
Sixty feet, yeah.
Um, so, just to add that.
Okay. I have nothing for them.
Does that, well, well, no, let's make sure, does that help, or does?
Well, I, I don't want to get into a debate, but, but where I, the view I have is not that very many of those trees.
I did lose three or four, but, uh, naturally, I plan on, uh, replacing them, uh, I have a high water table, and I wasn't aware that, uh, at that particular area around the property line, that there was that much of an abundance of water at the time. Uh, I had landscapers in recently, we're going to pull the existing trees, raise the, uh, the ground, foot and a half, two feet, and replant them, as well as replace the existing trees, um, and I'm willing to add whatever else I need to make him happy.
Some, for some additional screening?
Yeah.
Well, he's going to have to screen, you're saying you're going to put, uh, remove those trees all around your property?
I, there, there's pictures showing.
Yeah, they're, they're here or something.
Well, I mean, he's going to replace those that died as well.
Right.
Yeah, there's six that, that died.
Either died or kind of, or were weak.
There's six that I pulled out, and he might be referring to those that are not there right now.
Would that help, if you, if you, there was additional screening there?
Twenty-five foot, that tree?
Well, again, again, these trees are expected to grow, blue spruce grow tall.
Yeah, very tall tree.
And if this building is going to be twenty-five feet, nothing?
Uh, your height is?
Up to, up to twenty-five.
Well, he's allowed up to twenty-five, but again.
It's not going to be that tall.
It's not going to be that tall.
You know, you know, I'm trying to.
I don't recall how it's going to be.
Here, it's ten, it looks like. Well, you have a couple, uh, at the top there, that gives it some height too, so that doesn't help.
Ten, eighteen.
You have eighteen, but that doesn't take it to the top of the.
It is, it is close to twenty-five.
It's up there.
It's going to be close to twenty-five, yeah.
With your hoopla.
Uh, but I'm allowed to put a seven hundred and fifty square foot structure up to twenty-five feet as well.
Correct.
So, I might add that.
Well, I'm just looking to see if you have an exact elevation, you don't have an exact elevation here.
So, basically, that's why I said up to twenty-five feet, so.
Point taken there, but you're correct, so, okay? So, this.
I'm sure I'm saying okay.
Yeah, no, I'm just, with, with the screening, that what we're asking is, with the screening is that, with trees that are likely to grow taller than the twenty-five feet that he's proposing, is that helpful to your concerns, or is there something else you think we could help address?
My only concern is the amount of mass of building.
Okay.
And if, if all, if the neighborhood all did that, it would change the neighborhood dramatically.
Okay. Um, I, understood, this, this board has considered similar applications, where again, with, where they can demonstrate what the use of the property, what the use of the structure would be, um, to, in essence, to justify why, that, what their need is for such a large structure, it makes it more reasonable, um, as opposed to seeing vehicles out in the driveway all the time, or out in the yard, it's more reasonable to have them in a garage. Um, but again, you know, we're certainly concerned as well about the numbers of, of things. I do want to mention, you, you mentioned that there was an existing shed, are you going to be replacing?
Uh, that's going to be removed.
That's going to be removed, okay, so again, we're not going to have multiple structures on there.
No, ma'am, no, we're not.
You know, your, your intention is to use the space now in the garage to be able to service the function?
Accommodate, correct.
Okay. All right, um, no other neighbors, anybody else? If, if not, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second, all in favor? Aye. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Okay, guys, want me to read again?
Somebody pass this to Pam?
Thank you.
Um, appeal number thirty-five, thirty-six oh five, Michael, applicant Michael De Batista is requesting a variance to construct a hun, one-thousand square foot detached garage at ten East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction, uh, resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board to be allowed to construct a one-thousand square foot detached garage, where seven hundred and fifty square feet is the maximum permitted under the code, whereas this action is a type-two action under CQ, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News, the official newspaper for the town, on October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, and whereas the zoning board of appeals has held a public hearing on November thirteen, two thousand and twelve, and whereas the zoning board of appeals, appeals finds that, the granting of the nav, variance would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, that desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant needs room for his deck furniture, RVs, and, uh, three personal vehicles, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect on impact on the physical or environmental condition, conditions in the neighborhood, the difficulty in adhering to the area requirements of the law was not created by something the applicant did or proposes to do, now therefore it be resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves the request made by Michael Batista, ten East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction, who is requesting a variance to construct a one-thousand square foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member on the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy, seconded by the applicant owner, resolution, seconded by zoning board members.
All right, before you finish, let's, let's do two things. Number one, I have a concern with the issue, with the statement that difficulty in hearing, adhering to the requirements was not created by something applicant did or proposes to do, I, I think we have to strike that, okay? In this case, it's his request, so that, now, the other thing is, um, he has stated that he's going to remove his shed, so I would really like to include that in the record, so that we're not, um, you know, we're recognizing that this is replacing an existing structure, making it larger, as opposed to having multiple structures on there. So, if we perhaps add before, be it further resolved, we add?
I think something to the effect that, uh, let me see.
We just say and remove existing shed?
That there isn't.
And no sheds without further approval of the board.
And remove existing shed?
Finds that there is an existing shed, which shall be removed by the applicant, and that the, uh, granting of the request will improve the aesthetics of the property by allowing him to properly store all of his property, all the, that he has located at the property, real property. Boy, there's a lot of property, all the personal property on the real property.
Dot, 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 I, I got as, only as far as I got, we'll let Pam get that from the tape here. Okay, so with that change, is are you?
Yeah, yeah, uh, as amended, it's fine.
Okay, so now I have a.
Resolution is.
Resolution with a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no, sorry, Jim, votes as follows, Jim.
Yeah, I'm jumping you here, aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And, and myself, aye, your motion carries, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for Pam. She has to get part of it from the record. All right, item number six, appeal three-six-zero-seven Edelson, has been withdrawn by the applicant. I need a motion by the board to refund all but five dollars, so that, because we did actually have a review, and so there was some time and effort spent on this.
So-
So, move, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Item number seven, appeal three-six-zero-eight Appolino, Stephen A. Appolino, Seven Brandy Lane, Wapinders Falls, is requesting an eleven-foot sideline variance for a proposed two-car garage pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash one-oh-seven of the zoning ordinance. Again, for the record, for the purpose of disclosure, Steve is one of my neighbors. He is not my immediate neighbor. There is a flag lot driveway between us, but it should be known that my own property, I got a variance to do the same thing like eighteen or nineteen years ago. So, I certainly understand the need for it. You know, Steve maintains his property very, very nicely, so I have no objection to this, but that's just, that's just for the record.
I just wanna present a copy of-
Hold on, I need, I need to open the public hearing. So, do I have a motion to open the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Steve, you-
I just wanna-
We have certified.
Oh, okay.
There will not be a second level as initially.
Oh, okay.
There'll be no steps.
Okay. Okay, good. There's still the breezeway though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, it's attached because of the breezeway. Okay.
So, you can have that copy.
Okay. Anybody wanna take a look at them? All right, so, again, Steve's proposing to add a two-car garage to his existing home. Any comments or questions or board members? We've already reviewed this to somebody sent last month, so.
I'm good.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the application by Steve? The appeal request from Steve Appolino, Seven Brandy Lane, requesting an eleven-foot sideline variance for a proposed two-car garage. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And the pleasure of the board.
Sure.
She's got it.
Oh, she got it.
That's true. Appolino, is that right?
Yes.
Appolino. Um, for an eleven-foot sideline variance for the proposed two-car garage at Seven Brandy Lane, Wapinders Falls, whereas the applicant has applied for a zoning board for an eleven-foot sideline variance for proposed two-car garage pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash one-oh-seven of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is a type-two action under Secra and no further action is required, and whereas a legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News, the official newspaper of the town, on October thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant is in need of more space. The variance requested is not substantial, and other homes on the street have the same thing. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of, in the neighborhood. Can I ask last name? Now, therefore, being it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Stephen A. Appolino, Seven Brandy Lane, Wapinders Falls, who's requesting an eleven-foot sideline variance for the proposed two-car garage pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash one-oh-seven C of the zoning board ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized members of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, your motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Pam, so she's got the changes. All right, item number eight, appeal three-five-zero-nine Gomes. Sorry, three-six-zero-nine Danielle Gomes, two nineteen. Country Club Road, Hopeway Junction is requesting a variance to allow her to keep an existing swing set in front of the rear line of the dwelling and a nine-foot sideline variance pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash one-oh-seven of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good evening, okay. As we discussed last time, there is a bright lake set with blue mulch, safety surfacing around it, and that's- But there are limitations based on the slope of the backyard that kind of limit where she can go, so.
Right.
When we last met with you, we did ask about screening. We did ask if you could provide a landscape plan, and we also did talk about the potential of taking down some of the yellow, like the slide and-
Slide on the side.
Right, at least during the winter months or something, when there's less likelihood of the screening to be there. These are two of the same?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you. All right, so, from the road, or, from the road, okay, we're here. So, you're suggesting the existing trees, but you're sugge-, okay, so you're suggesting seven white spruce trees that are gonna cover an area how big?
That whole.
I don't see any dimensions here, so.
Yeah, it's that whole area on the swing set that's on the side that the landscaper had.
Okay, what size are these trees gonna be at the time that they're installed?
Probably eight feet, I'm gonna say, six to eight feet.
And so, how wide potentially? Yeah.
Yeah, I know they're big, so they can cover everything there, but the landscaper proposed for them.
Okay, so this is the swing set, this is the area that's blocked in with the blue safety surfacing that's in there.
But you're gonna be able to see through them, it's just gonna provide some-
Right.
They're not gonna put them side to side, otherwise they'll grow up and the dead branch on the bottom will die, and you can see right through it. I mean, the way I think maybe the resolution can read that they agreed to provide screening to the neighbors and to, along the front of the swing set, sufficient to, sufficient to landscaping to screen it and afford the white spruce tree. So, if seven's not enough, I mean, if seven's not enough-
Seven's not enough, but we did ask for a landscape plan to be sure that what they were proposing to us was going to reasonably block the view.
And the problem we have, though, is-
They've gotta grow.
They make, yeah, they make this seven little star circle plums.
Are the representations that you have here are when they get installed? Or this is gonna, what they're gonna look like in four years, six years, eight years?
Uh, I don't know. I think it was, they're gonna be a pretty decent size when they install them, so they can cover the swing set for the screening. So, you know, just trying to help the screening, you know, for what it is.
And I'll be nosy, what kind of price do they give you to put the seven trees?
I don't know. That's with the owner. I say they're, they're actually out in LA, you know, I'm just doing this for them.
He didn't look like Danielle.
What about changing the color of the mulch to, so it doesn't stand out?
The mulch, you can't, you can't see the mulch on the road. Yeah, I mean, it's up there on a hill. I mean, it's literally up there on a hill up there, yeah. I know they were saying maybe the color of the slide, if they have to take the one side of the slide off, she'll take the slide off if somebody was gonna complain about it. I know they have pictures, they didn't get them to me, but they have pictures of, of other swing sets that are on the side of the house. I know that this law passed like three years ago, whatever, that they, you used to be able to put them on the side of the house, but now they just changed it that you can't or something of that nature.
I mean, I guess I'm just concerned about that, you wanna give the trees room to grow, so you don't want them to be right on top of each other, because then, like Jim said, they're not gonna grow properly.
I mean, if you can tell me a different tree that wants to go up there, I mean, I say the swing set's gonna be down probably in ten years when the daughter grows up, you know, it's gonna be gone.
Exactly, and that's what I'm worried about. By the time these grow to be the size that you're saying they're gonna be.
Right.
So, is there a different-
Is there a different type of bush that grows or whatever?
Now, that's more of a hedge bush as opposed to-
Well, I think, yeah, a U or something that grows to be fifteen feet tall max, because they grow fairly quickly, and you can put them in at seven, eight feet tall, and then you'd be all set.
Right.
But that's, they're showing white spruce, unless they're, I don't know, nothing about landscape, unless they're in some sort of miniature or something, then they're gonna get to be huge.
Yeah, is it possible to sort of, you know, it doesn't make sense to make it like an angular shape that you have, how we're making it straight along the property?
No, no, it's better this way, because from the front of the street, as you're driving by this way, you see it as well.
Well, I see.
So, that's why the ideas have to have the house block it and then have the rest of it block it.
Okay.
No, no, I understand why they're, we did specifically ask for it to be, to go around the front there.
That's what I'm saying, if we wanted to maybe specify something, I don't know, we need to hear it from the landscaper.
Is she willing to a different type of bush?
Oh, she's willing to do whatever it takes to keep the swing set there for her daughter, so don't break her daughter's heart, I know that much. I mean, unless somebody's gonna complain, if somebody's gonna come up and complain, yeah, if I sit down, let's, if somebody's here to complain about it and see where it comes, 'cause I know it came from a complaint, you know, I'll be patient and wait, you know?
All right.
How tall is the swing set altogether? Was it eight feet tall?
Seven feet, I'm gonna say it is. I can say it's seven feet.
No, it's taller than seven feet.
I, you know, it's just-
Yeah, clubhouse.
Ten feet, yeah, more like ten feet.
And you could, but even you don't really have to screen the whole thing.
Yeah, but you know what, even though there's, it's not that tall. It's not the ten feet.
Yeah.
I might, we have a playset with the clubhouse on the top of it, it's not ten feet, not why.
I might go with the top of it. I mean, the clubhouse, they have to go on-
Maybe the peak of that, oh, the one roof is probably maybe ten feet or something, but the rest of it, you know, it's kind, it's kind of a long swing set.
It's a swing set, right? And if you stand underneath it, where the chain's attached-
You can reach, right.
You can touch it.
Yeah, you can touch, yeah.
So, that's, that's why I'm saying, that's probably seven feet, another three feet, you're ten feet tall.
Okay. All right, um, I got, well, you know what, why don't we listen here if there's any other neighbors before we get locked into a-
Okay.
All right, make sure that this is appropriate for the neighbors. I don't even need to invite you up, come right up.
No, I am the neighbor right to the right of the house.
Okay.
It is a very large structure.
Yes.
It, as you said, the blue mulch, you don't see it, but I do see it from my bedroom window.
Oh, okay, point taken.
The swing set is the view from my living room window.
Okay.
As he says, that he doesn't believe that they can put it in the back, but they can, there's plenty of room in the back of the house. They've had a party with tents and chairs, so if they can have tents and chairs, I believe that a swing set can also be moved back there.
Okay.
I'm very nervous. I don't wanna take away from a little girl's dream. I, it's a beautiful swing set, it's just that in the neighborhood, when you come in on Country Club and you're right by Bridgemont, it's what you see.
Right.
It takes away from the cata-, the, I don't know, the-
Character.
The character of the neighborhood. Besides also me being the direct neighbor, it takes away from my view. In my living room window, that's what I see. From my bedroom window, I see the mulch, I can see everything, and there is room in the back to move it. And I know you're proposing trees and everything like that, I'm not opposed to that, but it has to be where it, it can be even with the neighborhood coming from the sidewalk up, all the way up. I have a hill, my hill, my property is actually more hillier than him, and I wanna put a shed in, but I'm not gonna put it in the front of my lawn, 'cause I got nowhere else to put it. Um, you know.
If there's room in the back, I don't see it going.
Excuse me?
No, no, we're, we're-
Oh.
Yeah, my, my thing is, if you, you're testifying, they, they actually had, what, large tents? How big were these tents?
I submitted pictures.
Did you?
Yes.
Yeah, picture the tents up?
Yes. I have my camera, if you wanna see it in the camera, it's been out there. Yeah, 'cause I'm Meldaman.
You've Meldaman, or you-
Yes.
Oh, okay.
When did you Meldman?
About after your first meeting.
Cool, okay. Okay. Well, if you have them, we'd appreciate some of them.
This is not, you'll probably have to adjourn this if I grant it to, they can be heard on it.
They were stuck in the bottom of the file.
Just as you found them.
Yeah, it takes you a while to go through it, sorry.
No, it's all right. You're taking these from your yard?
I'm taking them from my driveway.
All right, well, they, okay, they are, the tent is definitely on a slope, that's for sure.
It's on a slope, but it's not that it can't be-
No, no, I, I hear you, I see, the tables and chairs are staying.
And I wanted to ask if anybody has gone out to the actual site to measure it, to see? I mean, obviously, you've seen the swing set, 'cause you know how large it is, 'cause you mentioned in the coloring and everything.
Right, right.
But has anybody gone in the backyard to see if it could be put into the backyard?
Yeah, the two yellow slides, that's right. All right, it's definitely blue.
It's definitely large.
Yeah. Oh, no, when she was here last month, she definitely-
Oh, I know, and I, I watched it, and I know-
Her eyes got open to the fact that it was-
Yes, yes.
Suddenly, it shouldn't have been there, and it-
And I, and I don't believe that she realized that what she was putting up and where it was, and I don't think that she meant to put it where my living room is either, but it, but the fact is that it is.
Right. Yep, I agree with you on this one.
I have children of my own, so it's not that I don't want a child to play on a swing set, it's just that I bought in that area for a reason.
No, we understand. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you.
You have a-
We appreciate it.
This is the one that she shows, she showed us.
Anybody else?
I'm a neighbor up the street and across the road, and when this swing set first came up, I mean, you drive into the neighborhood, and it was like, oh, my God, I can't believe they were able to put that up there, and I just wanna say, I really do think that it changes the look of our neighborhood, and, and I don't think it was done intentionally by any means, but it is there, and I, I, I don't know how you could really block it and, you know, change that from coming up the street, so, you know, I drive up and I have to see it every day, and same thing, I have kids, we don't, you know, have any objection to a swing set, but I certainly think that there should be other options, it's not a necessity, it's something that's, that's, you know, wonderful to have, but if it could be moved into the backyard, that would be great, 'cause it does change the landscape of what you see when you drive into our neighborhood, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, come on out.
I'm Roxanne Brennan. I live on Country Club Road also. I could probably repeat verbatim what she has just said, because I've, I feel exactly the same way. I certainly don't want any hardship brought upon anyone for something that was not done with malice, okay? But it does change the neighborhood, and if this exception is made, will other exceptions be made? Will other, other structures and other exceptions be made so that the character continues to change? It was not the intent for the homeowners purchasing at the time to see the character of the neighborhood change. One note about the screening, I have zero faith in white pines. I have experience with white pines.
They were white spruce, not pine.
Excuse me, not pines, spruce. I meant to say spruce, white spruce. We've had extremely, you know, extreme bad luck with white spruce, not only our property, but of neighbors I've, you know, encountered. They grow very sporadically, irregularly, irregularly in pattern, in density, and at different heights, and they are prone to that, so that you will not have a good screen with that particular type of tree at all. Plus, it would take too long for those, really for any evergreen to grow that quickly to, to offer full coverage. I sincerely hope that a, it can be, the place that can be moved in the back, whether or not, it, it may cost them more money, but I really do sincerely believe they should do that, changing the grading, the slope, adding fill, whatever's necessary, the place that can fit in the backyard, I'm sure of that, and I would like to see it removed for the benefit of the neighbors, and especially the next-door neighbor. I, I do feel for them, I really do. If I were in her shoes, I would be speaking with you also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, I personally think we should leave this open and let you guys take, let you take these comments back to your client and-
Yep, I'll do that, I'll do that, um, I just know when they put the swing set up in the back, I know where the tent was for the party, for his 30th party, um, she's still going to see the swing set in the backyard. I mean, she won't see the mulch now, or she won't put the mulch there, but it'll still be in the back, and then she won't need a variance if she moves it to the back.
Right.
So if she moves it to the back, we won't have to come back?
Right.
I'll call you and-
It's going to take some doing back there, because, you know, even the-
I know, there's a retaining wall back there, and she's afraid of the lower retaining wall for her daughter to fall off the swing set off the lower retaining wall, is, is what her concern is. You know, she has to do what she has to do, I'll talk to her about it, and, you know, and, uh, get back with you and, and maybe not have to come back, she might just move it, you know, and, and do what she's got to do.
Just notify the office if you want with the drawing.
Either we'll see you next month with an alternate, or-
Okay, that sounds good. Do you want to keep that drawing, or it's obsolete now?
I want one at least for the file, but otherwise-
Yeah, we need it because it's been talked about here, right?
Right, so that's why, they gave us two though, so you can have the extra one back.
Okay.
Pam has one for the file? What happened to the other one?
Why don't you sign in for her, or?
Yes, the public hearing's still open, go ahead.
Well, I just have a question, how do I find out what happened?
Uh, when we post the next, if they've withdrawn it in the meantime, when we post the next agenda, it, same as this agenda had item number six saying withdrawn by applicant, you would see that as well. You'll see that in the agenda, otherwise you'll see it's still on for the public hearing for next month.
Okay, and I just wanted to reiterate what he said about the backyard, I will be able to see it, but from my bedroom, and that's only on the second floor. It's not that I don't want them to have a swing set, I just don't really want it on the side of my home with the kitchen, the, the living room.
And seeing it from the street.
Yes, and see, well, and the view from the street, you come down, that's what you say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn this to next month?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, public hearings are now done, so now we're up to reviews. Um, all right, appeal number three six zero six, Light of the World Ministries, Michael Valencia, Light of the World Ministries, is requesting a use variance to allow a church at five Donovan Drive, Hopple Junction, Zone I-1, property is in the ownership of Anthony Domenico. Okay, um, we actually had an opportunity to discuss with council before this meeting started, or before our public session started, um, about whether a use variance is actually appropriate. Uh, we do recognize that a neighboring property in this industrial park did get a use variance back in 2004. We also recognize, though, subsequent to that, that the Ralupa law has, actually allows that, as long as there is some other, um, that we, that we should be giving more leniency to, um, religious institutions and, and requests for use. Um, so given that, we actually feel that there's no action needed by this board, um, and that the use, because there's a, a consistent use otherwise, not that a, a use variance would have been appropriate-
Right.
But we do know that that was what was given last time around, so we're, we don't want to go that route.
Right.
But again, in light of Ralupa, we feel that the use is consistent with, with what's there already.
Okay.
At this particular location.
So you can go back to the zone, to the planning board for any other site plan issues that you might need.
Okay.
And of course they'll have to file their IRS exempt form, just showing their religious group certified with the IRS.
Okay. We haven't made a formal application to the planning board yet because we were kind of feeling this out.
Well, that's up to the building inspector to refer you if they feel-
Right.
Parking is an issue or something like that.
Right, okay.
And just to, there was, there was an expired building permit on there, I don't know if it's been resolved, um, Mary wasn't able to be at our prep meeting, so, um, but if you can just please have your client, it's not your client, actually, it's the building.
Yeah, they're, they're in contract, they just, today, went that way, so what happens is, is all that, hopefully they'll start coming out and finding out what's going on, so, but, okay. I appreciate it, folks, thank you.
No problem. Sure, do I have a motion to refund $45 of the $50 application fee?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so because we didn't go to a public hearing, there's no addition, there, we'll, we'll keep $5, you get the rest of your money back.
And just for, and just for clarification, whether it's the planning board or the building department, the minutes of the meeting, will that be sufficient for what we're, good.
Take care.
Okay. All right, item number 10, Appeal three six one zero, I hate to say this wrong, but Baker, Baker? Okay, Brett Baker? Bygurt, thank you, sorry. Twenty-six Lake Walton Road, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a 10-foot rear line variance for an existing pool deck pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Now, unlike the other applications, we haven't seen yours before, so if you don't mind, could you explain to us what you are requesting?
Okay.
Is this, is this an existing pool?
There's an existing pool.
With a deck?
With a deck.
Okay.
And the pool was within the confines, the deck-
Above ground pool or, or-
Above.
Okay.
Um, the offsets are all there, um, I put up an eight by 10 deck with the understanding that if it wasn't footed, if it was on like deck piers, that it wasn't going to be an issue. And then, um, I had the town out to do a metal bestest chimney, and they said that it wasn't conforming, so I came in to get everything squared away, and, um, went back, measured, came back, and I was close on one side with the 10 feet, so then I went through for the permit for the variance. And then after the variance is situated, then I can go for, uh, a deck permit. That's what I was told. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So why do you need the deck there? It's on, it's on piers, you can't just move it?
Um.
How big is this deck?
Could it be moved? It's on piers, but they're not, uh, sonotube piers, they're just like, it just sits a four by four in it, and it's just below the surface. There's no-
Your posts do stick into the ground somewhat, what are they sitting on?
No, it's sitting on a, a pier, but it's not a full sonotube, three feet, 36 inch, it's just, um, they sell them at Home Depot, it's just a, it's almost like a block with a wedge in it.
A space in the-
Yeah, for, just so the four by four can sit in there, and, um-
Have you buried those a little bit?
Yeah, they're just sitting right underneath the surface, so you see the wood, you don't see them unless you scratch it. Um, the property right behind me, actually, I should have brought pictures, I didn't think after-
Are they going to approve that?
Who's that?
Building department, you, you get a variance from us, and they're going to look at that, say, that's no good, we're not going to give you a permit for that, you're going to have to take that down and start over again.
Yeah.
So my question, coming back to, why do you have to put it there? Why can't you put it around the other side of the pool, whatever you got to do?
Um, if, if it turned more towards me, then you'd be facing the railing and whatnot, so when the kids are out there, you can actually see what's going on. Um, beyond that, I have a row of white pines that are 12 years old, and right behind those, the other property is the Mountford Group where the McDonald's is and all back there, so there's nothing back there but an open 15 acres up to Summerlin Plaza, so I'm right adjacent to that property.
How about your neighbors on the other side off Lake Walton Road there?
I'm sorry?
How about your neighbors on the other side?
Um, I'm a flag lot, so-
No, 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 right, so your neighbors along the-
Back of your-
To the left of your house.
There's four properties to one side on Van Oek Lane, they're quite a distance away, so nobody can see because I have, uh, bamboo that's about 15 tall, 15 feet tall on that side, bamboo. So, nobody can see in my backyard essentially from anywhere. It's, once you're back there, you really can't see anywhere. You're enclosed.
It's not, I'm not seeing screening on the aerial.
Right here?
Well, there I see, yeah, but-
But here's bamboo bushes.
There's bamboo on one side, white pine on the other, and then, um, the other side has, uh, this would be like an arborvitae.
Is there a pond or something on your neighbor's car?
There's a swale that was dug by Lou Balducci before, when the homes were built.
Yep.
So it's just like a swamp, really, it's not-
Okay.
Storm drainage.
Got it. So, so your purpose for requesting, obviously you can't move the pool, your purpose for requesting the deck to be on the other side is so that you can watch-
Visibility to who's in the pool, kids jumping, you know, I mean-
Okay, so it's a safety concern for the users of the pool?
Yeah, if we had swung it, we thought about swinging it, and then you're facing the back of it, and you don't really have the visibility with the spindles as to what's really going on, so at least this way here, um, you know, you have like full access.
You're talking visibility from your house?
Yeah, from the house, from the patio, because I don't know what you're looking at, but the pool is offset pretty far from-
There's an aerial here of the, of your neighborhood.
I'm actually looking just at the survey.
Wow, okay, I'm looking at the aerial.
So you want to be able to look across the pool and not have the railing, deck railing block your view of what's going on?
Yeah, it's, it's unfettered, see, that's like an older picture, this is all grown in, um-
That's why I wasn't seeing what, any, that anything was here.
Yeah.
I see your trees.
Those are very young, and this is an older-
Well, I, it's-
But, but even still, so there's a patio here, and, um, you know, if you sit on the patio, you're looking right at the pool.
Okay.
I don't know what the, the thing is for a, a deck like that on the pool, whether to approve your footings as proper, information is probably-
And actually, Mary would, Mary should have been here tonight, but she had a conflict, so if she's, I'll be here with her in the meantime.
When, um, whoever the-
Is there a better location that, you know, if you put it on the side, and then, I don't, do you get away from that without moving the pool?
Whoever the, um, I forget the name of the guy, maybe William or Bill, that did the building inspection for the deck, told me everything was good except for, I needed a railing on one side and a gate, which I did that already. So he said everything else, you know, was just a matter of-
So he was okay with-
Yeah, I actually scratched away to the ground to that, one of those piers, so he could see it, and he talked to somebody and that wasn't, he just told me this is what you have to do, and then-
How long ago was this?
A month? Month and a half at the most.
You had them out there for another reason, you said?
I had them out there for a metal bestest, for a stove, a wood stove, and then, uh, and then we found out that the, uh, they had never closed out the electric, which I had done my half, but it somehow didn't make it here. So I had to call the underwriter and get everything fixed to make sure that they had the proper information here, so we, during the course of that, all this other stuff came up, so I said, let's, you know, take care of it.
And what's the public hearing?
I don't know.
Okay for public hearing? Hi, do-
Question to advertise?
Second?
Second, what date do you want? Well, come on.
Next meeting.
December 11th, is that?
December 11th.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we do this again, the 11th?
Yeah, that's the actual public hearing.
And do, please do bring some pictures because of the screening and some of the issues that you were, that were raised up here.
For us to be able to see your yard is going to be very helpful.
No, it's important, I didn't, I learned that tonight after being here.
We can't see your yard from the street.
Yeah.
So yours is a-
Should I show up later instead of waiting, or what do you suggest?
You can watch it on TV and then come over when you see that we're getting within a couple items of you.
Hey, I don't get that channel. All right.
Oh.
We'll figure it out.
Here's your instructions, sir.
Look at the agenda.
Sir.
Look at the agenda.
You got to make sure you put up a sign and everything.
What channel are you on?
22.
22.
Look at the agenda, because the cell tower is on before you.
Living color.
That's going to be an-
All right. Item number 11, Appeal three six one one, Pinto, Edward Pinto, 37 Larchmont Tribe, Hopple Junction, is requesting a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence which is located in front of the rear line of his house pursuant to section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. All right, you have a, Clover Branch Road and the corner of Larchmont, yes, you have an existing fence that's been there for years.
It just fell down, from the hurricane, and knocked down four sections, snapped it.
Wow, okay.
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously it needs to be replaced.
Right.
And, uh, you know, the, the extra two feet will help with safety, privacy, noise.
He is right on the corner of Clover Branch, Clover Branch, at that area, right near Maple's Bridge, um, so-
The only change will be, it has to be three foot six because of the line of sight, though, I have to drop it, and then I'm going to taper it up to six feet, where, with this back-
Where would you taper it up, though?
Uh, right-
To the rear line of the house?
Yeah, the rear line of the house is going to go from three six to six, and then it's going to stay at six feet.
So it is, you need to still be here, if he's going to replace the fence anyway?
No, not behind the rear line.
No?
You know, I was told, I was told because it's still considered a, a front property, the side of my house.
Because it's on a corner.
Because I'm on a corner.
Corner lot.
Even though it's really my backyard.
Got it, okay.
I know.
Want to teach you to buy a corner house.
Yeah, didn't think about that. But it needs to be done because it looks like a wreck.
Yeah, well, okay, um, and believe me, the rest of your, you keep your yard very nicely there, so-
Except for that fence right now, it's a shambles. You know, you know, it's interesting, cedar, you can't plant, plant cedar on the maple trees, maple attacks the cedar, that's why the fence rotted.
Really?
I found that out, I never knew that.
Wow.
All the posts rotted. I've been replacing with, with pressured tree, which I didn't want, I wanted natural wood, but I, that's why I got to go with vinyl, because the wood will rot again.
Okay, are you going to white vinyl, or what?
Well, that's what I wanted to talk to you about, you know, I was saying, you know, I hate, I, I hate white, so then I'm saying, well, maybe I'll put gray to match the house, because it's gray body on the house.
Right.
And then try to plant some grasses in front of it that don't grow, because I have to still stay under six feet for the site, well, three foot six in that one area, and then, you know, because I don't want it to be a white fence either.
Yeah, white, white would like really stand out.
Really stark, you know, so that was the other question, is maybe we go to gray, all gray, so at least you kind of don't see it, you know?
Yeah, you explore what your options are to the, I mean, I don't think we can mandate a color, but, you know.
No, I mean, I, I, I mean, I know the white looks good, but I think because this is solid, it's going to just, you know, my neighbors can't see because they have, they have all pines, they can't see my house anywhere on the side.
And a picture tells a thousand words if you get-
I'm going to take some pictures of their-
Carefully.
Properties, I know, well, I have to talk to them too, I haven't even told them.
Well, just carefully on Clover Branch there.
Yeah.
All right, is, do I motion okay this for advertising for December 11th? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, please see Pam, she'll give you the instructions, and we'll see you next month. Appeal three, three six one two, Glass Holiday Summer Homes, Nick Sabatini representing Abago Glass, 202 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopple Junction, Holiday Summer Homes, is requesting a special permit for an expansion of a non-conforming use in order to put a 17-foot by 20-foot addition, 24-foot addition on Cottage Number Eight pursuant to section 194-123 of the zoning ordinance.
Good evening. Um, yeah, Mrs. Glass has unit number eight, um, and she would like to put a 24-by-17 addition off the back of it. The total square footage for the, for the hole and bungalow will be 985 square feet, because there is a mandate that it cannot go over 1,000 square feet over there.
What's her square footage now?
Um-
Because your math is different than the math we did.
What did you come up with?
962 and a half.
Hmm, I added 960, well, then you actually got a little less than me.
Yeah, we, we, we get, based on the measurements on the, on the map with the survey that you gave us, we guessed the existing house is 612, plus, we kind of measured the addition in two different, so there's 336 and another 19 and a half.
Well, she'll be happy to hear that then.
So it's, it's-
962.
It was an additional 355 and a half feet, which gets us to the 962.
Correct, yeah, it was that, yes, okay, so that's fine, 962.
Actually, it's 967, I don't even like my own man. Wow, 967 and a half.
Um, she does, she did go and get the letter from Holiday Home saying that there was no opposing of it at all.
Okay.
Um, over there, so we're here now just to, uh-
Can you explain, it, there's, it's not, I, I haven't been over there, honestly, um, all right, but is there, there's no driveway that goes up to these homes, is, they just park on the street area and then they all have to walk up?
Well, you know where Sports and Wellness is?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if you, where you enter Sports Wellness, there's a driveway there, and it loops all the way up, and then they have a couple of fields, like baseball fields and stuff up top, and that's where everybody parks, up in the fields. Um, and then they walk down, or they take the golf cart down, they have a caretaker to come and pick all their baggage up and bring them down to the little bungalows, and they have little sidewalks that go all over, um, through that, it is seasonal, also.
Can I ask you to come up here and show us, I'm not understanding, I'm not seeing a parking area on here, so that's why I'm having a hard time figuring out where it is.
Okay, this is number eight.
Right.
Here, this would be the road, and you come in here.
Okay.
And you come around.
Oh, this is the road?
Yeah, this is all the parking here.
It's not designated as a field.
Yeah. Not designated parking area.
That might be why I'm confused. This area here.
So this is seasonal, she doesn't live there year round?
No, no, every bungalow over there is seasonal.
So they park back here?
Yeah.
Then it's not a management better.
Okay.
It says there winter service, what does that mean?
Oh, that's a line that goes across, see this, this house right here, this is their caretaker, he's there year round, so that water line comes down behind everything, he goes to that because that needs water year round, everything else gets shut down.
And now, she represents that she's the owner of this, is it a condo? What is it over there?
There are two bungalow units, it's like a bungalow, um, her parents owned number seven, and then she just purchased number eight.
But does she own the land, the ground underneath it?
I think it's a co-op.
It's a co-op?
Yeah, it's a co-op, yeah.
Ah, okay.
That's why we had to go get the approval from them first.
Yeah.
In the latter, there's the name there.
Yeah, because she just owns the shares then, she doesn't own the unit.
Yeah, but they're the, the owners, but she has that unit under her control, so they can send to her, you know. Yeah, and all the units have to be the same vinyl size, the same windows, the same roofing, they can't go over a max size of 12 feet.
You can step back at this point, just so that you're about in the microphone, that's all. All right, any comments or questions from board members?
None.
Motion advertised?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
I will be watching you on TV and then coming over, good luck with the cell tower.
But don't speak.
Don't be late, because we might be too tired.
We just keep going until we're done. Item number 13, Appeal three six one three, Schneider, John Schneider, 14 Pierce Howard Road, Hopple Junction, is requesting a variance to allow him to keep a 960 square foot fabric garage pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. You are not Mr. Schneider.
And you're not here for him?
Okay. No, all right.
Okay.
Moving on.
We're going to put the sign for the public hearing. Public hearing.
I have number 14, Appeal 3614, Rouschenbach.
Yes.
All right, Ronald J. Rouschenbach, 22 Acacia Drive, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a variance to allow a 10-foot by 14-foot shed to be placed in front of the rear line of his dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107B2 of the zoning ordinance. All right, so let's look at your application. Can you explain to us why you're looking to do what you're looking to do?
Sure. Uh, right now, in the back of the house, it, it's very narrow, the property, it's like a wedge, it goes straight down, so my, my rear yard, or backyard is, is small, but the side yard in the back is, is longer, and it's bigger. And, uh, if, if the shed is put back in the side yard, it, it's even further away, the only house that's close is, is, is by the backyard, uh, by the driveway up on top, is, is where my neighbor's house sits on top, the shed would be right below if I put it in the backyard, and it'd be, be very close to the house, but by putting it back on, in the side yard, I can push it all the way back past the septic, and it's totally surrounded by trees, you can't see it from the road, and you would barely be able to see it from the neighbor's property on the hill above.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're on a, you're pretty much all, your property is all along Acacia here.
Yeah.
Well, because, when you, when your driveway comes in, that, it's not coming into the front of the house, right? The front of the house faces Acacia, so that's why he, his shed that he's proposed is, in fact, in front of the rear line of the house.
Oh, I see, I didn't catch that.
But...
Looking at the other map. Oh, I see.
It's behind the house, but along the house, front yard.
This is the same problem as we had with that garage.
Right.
Right, so it's the front.
Right. But if you put, the dilemma is, if you put it on the other side, why can't you put it closer to your neighbor? Because it's more visible for him, then.
Well, it's more visible for him, and, and it's, it's, there's not much room behind the house, because there's a, a rock outcropping behind the house, it, it's on a grade.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't go all the way back to the line, if there's trees, so it's, it's very narrow.
You're gonna bring us a picture of that route, of your rock outcropping for the next meeting?
Show us your problems, is why you can't put it where we say you can.
All right, so you're saying, rock, that more, if you put it on the other side, it's gonna be more visible to your neighbor?
Correct, in the back, because if, if they look down the hill, it's, they're gonna look right down onto the roof of the shed, where if I put it way in the back, it's, it's, you know, less of an eyesore, it's, it's almost, it's hidden, because if there're trees all over, you can't see anything from the road, plus I'm higher up, I'm on a cliff, so, so from the road, you can't, you can barely see my house, when you look up, you can see the...
Can we, can I ask you to come forward for a minute?
Sure.
Can you just, are these, is this line of trees still here, on your property?
Yes.
And so you're looking to put it, like, right about here?
Correct.
Okay.
Right over there, because on the back of the house, this is where the neighbor's house sits, so he's looking right down onto the, onto the roof of the shed.
Where's your septic system?
It's, it's right next to it, in the, in the back. The septic system's kinda right here, there's, there's a, um, septic box, it's in the corner of the house, and the fields are here, so it'd be ready for the septic fields.
Take some pictures, so we can see where the rock, where your septic is, where you're putting it, where you want it.
And, and if you can, from the street, so we can just see, you're not, nobody's gonna see it.
Yeah, no, sure.
Because, well, that, really, we don't want people, well, coming, I mean, coming up the street here, now, seeing a shed.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
That's, you know, was, was my concern, I mean, rather, the further away it is, especially assuming it's a little bit bigger.
Right.
And I try to keep it away, so it's less of an obstruction.
Okay. Any...
Just come with your pictures, I have no problem.
Okay, any comments or questions? No? Okay, go ahead.
Motion to advertise for next December meeting?
Second?
11th.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Thank you, we'll see you next month. Pam will give you the instructions.
Sir, right here.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, we have a, we have a question. Make it part of the...
Oh, well, we did already, we answered, right? I read it.
What do you want us to do?
I, we didn't ask for a no call, because my name was second to last. Uh, we didn't ask for a second call.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, just, second. All in favor?